Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the meeting of the Select Board for July 27, 2021. And I would like to start the meeting off by having a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Great. So, we will get started here. We have, we were going to have a joint meeting, I believe, with the Parks Commission, but I see, we have two members here, so you don't actually have a quorum for calling a meeting to order.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. So before we get into the initial business, I just wanted to take a minute, as we sort of change hands here, I guess I would say, and extend a personal thanks, and also I think I'll speak for the past members of the Board of Selectmen, sorry, the Select Board, how could I do that? Past members of the Select Board, to extend a real big thank you to Tarini for all of her leadership that she has exhibited over the last two years being the Chair of the Select Board. There's been a lot of time and energy put into helping us navigate our way through, especially last year with all the uncertain COVID craziness we went through, and she did that with lots of energy and tirelessly, while at the same time managing to carry on her duties as a full-time hospice person, and just a demanding full-time job. So I know it wasn't easy, and we really thank you for all of your time and effort put forward for the citizens of Southampton. With that, I would just like to reiterate that taking on now this role of Select Board Chair, thank you very much for the confidence that has been put in me, and I would like to assure everybody that we're going to try and keep on the same kind of, I guess, collegiality, open communication, accountability, and transparency amongst ourselves, ourselves to the employees of the town, and to the volunteers, the many volunteers that work in various roles here in Southampton, and keep on doing that with a good spirit, and hopefully achieve some goals this year that we are all proud of doing, okay? So with that, I think our first meeting topic, we really have the first two that are kind of empty, so there's no public hearings, there are no presentations tonight, but we do have some appointments and resignations, basically all appointments at this point. And the first one would be through the Park Commission, and I guess we have an open seat on the Park Commission that was not filled at the election time, and we need to fill a seat until the next election, is that correct?
Correct. Mark Reed, Chairman of the Park Commission, Paula Mack, who is also a Commission Member. We have two other members currently that are away on vacation, so they couldn't be here tonight. So that the empty seat that was vacated by Jeff Swanson, no one volunteered to run, so that we have a vacancy. Janet Kane approached the Park Commission and expressed interest in joining us. We discussed it at our last board meeting, and we all agree that she would be a great person to have on the Park Commission, and hopefully the board will appoint her tonight, so that then we will have a quorum for our meeting right after this is done.
Okay, good. So would you like to make a motion on that?
So yes, we'd like to make a motion to have the Select Board appoint Janet Kane to the Park Commission to fill out the remaining time for the open slot.
Okay.
I believe it might be another two years.
It would go until May 17, the next election, so May 17 of 2022.
Okay.
In this case, yeah.
Great.
Okay, and could I have a second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to hear from Janet.
And not just a few words, you want a full dissertation on why she wants to do this, correct?
I'd like to refer to the Chair, not the old Chair for that, but Janet Kane, 83 Glendale Road. I'm honored to be appointed to the Parks. I've attended numerous meetings over the last year and a half. We've worked very closely with the Pickleball Initiative. My first career was a physical education teacher, I was a club pro at a racquetball club, I coached kids, I coached adults, it's part of my heart. So I look forward to working together, and I admire the folks on the Commission, and I think that it's a great opportunity for me. I'll go one year at a time. But thank you for your vote of confidence, too.
Okay, very good, okay. Any other discussion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please, and the Park Commission folks are eligible to also vote in this, even though you don't have a quorum, it's part of your statutes, so.
Mark Reed, yes.
Paula Mack, yes.
John Lumber, yes.
Francine Tish, Lib' Stae.
Roden, yes.
Piper, yes.
Falls, yes. Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks, thanks for stepping up.
Thank you very much.
Yep, great. So, we will leave you to your next meeting, and all of that work, it looks like you've got a bit to do in that folder over there, so, good.
They just have to sign a lot, that's all.
A lot of signatures, yeah. Get the pen out. Okay. So we'll continue on with the appointments. Looks like here we have several appointments for election workers, and if I may, I will just go ahead and read all of the names all at once. Patrice Cravier, Joanne Perrier, Lucine De Palmer, Mary Robinson, Virginia Huntley, Jessica Nieswender, and Eileen Hamel. And these seven people have been, have been put forth as possible election workers, they've turned in their paperwork, it's been signed by the town clerk, their terms would all expire on August 15, 2022, and that's where we are. So could I have a motion to approve the entire slate?
Make a motion to approve the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven election workers.
Seven, right. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, maybe Lucy can answer this. How many election workers are usually needed for the various elections in town? And do you employ all of them? How do you make a decision around who gets called in over other people, that sort of thing?
Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk. Normally we have eight, because the hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, it's a state election, general election, so we have to have people switch out, because some people will do a 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM full day, and some will do 6:00 to 1:00, or 1:00 to 8:00, or 1:00 to 4:00. So we have to switch out, and we need normally two checkers at the check-in table and two at the checkout, and then we need a warden, so.
So do you usually use all of the election workers for all of the elections?
Usually, yeah, yeah. Usually, I mean, this year we didn't, because we, the Acts of 2020 and 2021, we didn't have to do a checkout table. I don't know if that's going to carry over to 2022. It may, if it does, then, you know, but if I call someone and they can't do it, then I still have backup, I have seven other people.
Okay, do you rotate who you call?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I try to call everyone, so.
Okay. And kind of at a minimum, you need five, then, if that's what I'm hearing?
Yeah, because we have to have.
At any election?
Yeah.
Great.
I have another question. Recently, the election worker pay was switched over to the operating budget, that was, we learned that that was the right way to do it. Are the election workers, when you mentioned 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, are they subjected to, you know, overtime laws and that sort of thing?
Not that I know of. Mass General Law for Elections says that the hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so there's no overtime.
Okay.
It's just that schedule.
And under the FSLA, it would be 40 hours in a week.
Okay, so it wouldn't be after 8:00 or anything, yeah, okay. Okay. Thanks, Lucy. Yeah, any other discussion, questions?
Can I just say one more thing? I am going to be putting in PCFs for all of these people, for the increase to be minimum wage.
Yeah.
1350. Yeah, so.
They actually had an election before the end of the fiscal year, were they, so they were not paid as the other retroactive workers were, no?
No, no, they were paid, they were paid last year.
Okay, so going forward, we'll get them regularized to 1350.
They're all going to be, yeah.
Okay. Good, thanks, appreciate that. All right. If we're ready to vote, could I have, could I have votes, please? Anyone? We have a motion and a second, I believe? Do we not?
Do we, are we doing roll call for all, or we just?
We don't need to do roll call now.
It was just for that.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Very good, thank you. Moving on. Moving on, let's go to reports, and we'll start, we've switched the order back around a little bit to the way it kind of used to be. We're going to start with the Town Administrator's Report, and thank you, Ed, for going back to having a written report for us, much appreciated. The rest of us will still kind of do our Select Board reports more orally and from our notes, but we appreciate having a written report from the Town Administrator, so I'll let you go ahead with that.
Sure, thank you. Let's see, just wanted to let you know that the Building Department has sent out information that their online permitting option for contractors and residents is up and working, and the information may be found on the Building Department page of the town website. The Assessor's Office will be open on Tuesdays from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM, and also on Wednesdays from 8:30 AM to 1:00 PM, while they are looking to fill the Principal Assessor's vacancy. We did receive a response from Town Council regarding the Water Commission authority to set the rates of pay for employees of the Water Department, but I received it after the agenda was posted. I have listed the response below, but I would like to include this as an agenda item for the August 10 Select Board Meeting for further discussion, and to also let the Water Commissioners know of the opinion from Town Council. You have requested an opinion concerning the authority of the Board of Water Commissioners to set the salaries of Water Department employees. As I understand the facts, the Water Department is administered by an elected three-member body, which I refer to as the Board of Water Commissioners or Board in this opinion. The Board of Commissioners was established pursuant to Chapter 339 of the Acts of 1931, which authorized the town to supply water to its residents. In my opinion, the Board of Commissioners does not have the authority to set salaries of Water Department employees. In my opinion, the authority lies with the Select Board, subject to any procedural requirements for budget setting, the salary ranges of a classification and compensation plan, if any procedural requirements for salary merit increases that are contained in the town's personnel rules and regulations were applicable, and of course, subject to appropriation. Chapter 339 of the Acts of 1931 confers significant authority on the Board of Water Commissioners, but this authority is subject to such instructions, rules, and regulations as the town may from time to time impose by its vote. There is nothing in Chapter 339 that expressly confers upon the Board of Water Commissioners the authority to hire personnel. We have interpreted the analogious provisions of General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 69B, which similarly does not contain any reference hiring authority, as not providing boards of Water Commissioners with such hiring authority. This contrasts with other statutes which expressly authorize an elected or even appointed board or official other than the Select Board to hire personnel. CEG, General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 12, Zoning Board of Appeals may, subject to appropriation, employ experts in clerical and other assistance. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 19, Town Clerk may appoint an Assistant Town Clerk. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81A, Planning Board may employ experts in clerical and other assistance. In contrast, General Law, Chapter 41, Section 62, governing the powers and duties of the Highway Surveyor, gives the surveyor exclusive control of the ordinary repair of public ways in his town without being subject to the authority of the selectmen. But that statute, like Section 69B, does not confer upon the Highway Surveyor hiring authority. In short, different statutes confer different levels of hiring authority upon various boards and officials, and we need to examine the specific statute that applies to the board or official in question in order to determine whether that board or official has hiring authority. If the particular statute or other enabling legislation does not provide a board or official with hiring authority, state law defines the selectmen as the default appointing authority, unless otherwise provided by charter. See General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 7, 2A. This is reflected in the personnel rules and regulations in the definition of appointing authority. Where the statute or enabling legislation defining the powers and duties of an elected or appointed official does not expressly provide hiring authority, we take the position that no authority can be implied. As a result, it is my opinion that the Water Commissioners do not have any hiring authority for Water Department personnel, and cannot establish salary or compensation levels for the Water Department employees. Please note that I have also considered the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, which states in pertinent part that all boards or heads of departments of a town shall as soon as may be after the passage of the annual budget fix a salary or compensation of all officers or employees appointed or employed by them, emphasis added, provided that said salary is within amount appropriated at town meeting. Because it is my opinion that the Water Commissioners do not have any hiring authority over Water Department employees, the provision of General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, cited above, would not provide the Commissioners with authority to set department employees' compensation within the appropriation made at town meeting. I note that it is possible that the Select Board may have delegated authority to the Board of Water Commissioners to act as the hiring authority for Water Department employees at some point in the past. Similarly, Town Meeting may have voted some express hiring authority to the Board of Water Commissioners. Either of these events could impact the above analysis. If the Board of Water Commissioners has historically made hiring-firing decisions for department employees, it may be worth researching town records to ascertain whether either the Select Board or Town Meeting has taken any additional action with respect to hiring and management of these employees. My understanding from our conversations is that you were not aware of any such delegation of authority, and that the Select Board had traditionally acted as appointing authority for Water Department employees. I will also note that the use of an enterprise fund for the Water Department has no bearing on this issue, as this is just an accounting mechanism, and there is no inherent independent authorities that ignore to the Board of Water Commissioners as a result.
So we'll definitely aim to put that back on the agenda for the next meeting. I think it's wise to share that with the Water Commissioner.
Yep.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Could we finish his report first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was done, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll come back to it.
And just to let you know, the faulty sensor unit and the HVAC system here at Town Hall for Air Handler Unit 4 in the duct has been replaced, and that has taken care of the issue of it tripping every once in a while. Randall Camp, Highway Superintendent, has requested that Emily Tully from Tai and Bonn present at a public hearing at one of the August Select Board meetings in order for public outreach as part of our MS-4 requirements, as well as to be able to discuss any potential ramifications from our new stormwater bylaw modifications, which is awaiting approval by the Attorney General, as well as what has been accomplished during fiscal year 21, and what is planned for fiscal year 22, and our MS-4 plans and requirements. Does the Select Board have a preference to schedule this public hearing for either the August 10 or August 24 meeting?
Any thoughts from anyone? Is there a preferred date?
When are we starting the department reports?
Probably in September.
Okay, so it's not like Randall would be presenting any, okay.
Hadn't planned on it, really, I mean, we need to talk about the schedule tonight, we've got an idea for a schedule, but whether we adopt that is another story.
I don't have a preference then.
So should we do it if the person is available on the 10th? Should we have the person invited to come in and do a presentation, of course?
Sure.
Let's try for the 10th, and if that doesn't work, then the fallback will be the 24th.
Thank you. And then, just to let you know, we have received notification that the town has received a $100,000 Mass Trails grant to help further fund the acquisition of the Right-Away from the Pioneer Valley Railroad for the Greenway Bike and Pedestrian Trail.
Yeah, Lucy, you had a question?
Could I just ask, Ed, on this last item, how he would, could you summarize the different, we've had a couple of different sources of funding now for this, could you just put the whole picture together for us?
We've actually received two $100,000 grants. One was from, I believe, DHCD from their.
The Small Town Housing Choice Fund.
Fund, yeah. And then this one came from Mass Trails.
Yeah.
And then the.
And we also have the debt exclusion that was passed at Town Meeting.
Yeah, I was going to go further into that under the Greenway agenda item.
But we have at least a good down payment of $200,000 toward the Right-Away acquisition. Yeah, okay, Lucy, question?
So I just want to know, Lucy Dalton, Town Clerk, Town Strong Guard, the question that was asked at the July 13 meeting about getting legal information from KP Law regarding the water enterprise, if Town Meeting overrules, has that been answered?
No, this is the opinion that they gave us, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it doesn't sound like Town Meeting has.
So Town voters, they vote, and it doesn't matter?
Right.
So I guess the confusion, and I understand what you're saying, Lucy. The confusion is the question at the beginning that they said, is the question, the Board of Water Commissioners, able to set the salaries of the Water Department employees? And on July 13, we discussed, regardless of who sets it, if the town votes on it, is it, are we stuck with it, basically?
No.
No, and that's.
That's an appropriation.
Okay. And that's based on this GL, Chapter 41, Section 108, that she says.
Chris, okay, yeah, sorry, John.
So just, the, so as I understand it, we're going to have a joint session now, I think that's what I heard Madam Chair say in the middle of the report, but if we're not going to discuss this tonight, that's fine, we can delay until we're together, but I would like to see how, what the question that was posed, what I, and I guess now I'd like to see the, because I believe supporting documents with the question, namely the enabling acts. So I just want to read them myself, and then the original opinion. Because my guess is this is a copy and paste, which is fine, but it's not signed by anybody.
Yeah.
So if we could have that packet.
Right, and as Ed said, this came in after we set the agenda, we set the agenda last Thursday.
Yeah.
And so anything that comes in within 48 hours of the meeting doesn't get on the agenda, so that's why Ed was suggesting we bring it up on August 10 to discuss it and have Water Commissioners available to also be here.
Respectfully, I understand that, but it's now been read into the record. So if it, it's now part of the record, and this is the first time anybody's seen it. So now we're going to have a two-week period where people are stewing about this. That's all.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that that, I mean, the choice would have been to not say anything about it, I suppose, tonight, but we have the opinion, and so the decision was to at least let us know what that had said, but yes, we will put it on the agenda for August 10 at this point in time, and invite anybody from the Water Commissioners that can be here to join us, whether it's a joint meeting or just representatives of the Water Commission itself.
And it also opens it up to the fact if there was anything that we don't know about that was approved by Town Meeting or the Select Board.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other comments or questions on this report?
I have actually a question about the first one. The Building Department has set up the online permitting option for contractors and residents. So does that mean people are going, so my understanding is that depending on the property, Conservation Commission has to sign off on the building permit before anyone can start building. Is this, is that considered? Is that part of this online permitting option, is making sure that conservation is notified if a building permit's coming in?
This is the application piece.
Okay, this is just the application.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so nothing's being permitted online?
No.
Okay, sorry, that was, just want to clarify, thank you.
But the idea is to make it a little bit more accessible, hopefully, to contractors and others that need to do business with the town?
Right, yeah, instead of having to bring the hard-page documents in, you can do it online, and you can also pay online.
Yeah, okay, good. That sounds like a step forward, hopefully it will be.
Yes.
Used, okay, good. All right. If no other comment on the Town Administrator's Report, let's move on to Select Board Reports. Who would like to go first? Joy, would you like to start down there?
I just might need a minute to load up my notes, sorry.
Yeah, or anybody else? John, want to start on your end?
Sure, I can go first, and I understood, so I submitted these in written format, which I will continue to do. I'll have them in Friday before the weekend, so they can be part of the generally accepted public record. I'm just going to skim through it and skip over all the attachments. But met with the Finance Committee last night for a few hours, there was a healthy conversation about the Town Accountant, Assistant Town Accountant's position, a lengthy discussion about the deadlines that are approaching, and the concerns about, from their point of view, it doesn't appear that commitments have been booked, assessments are not being booked timely, Chancery's not posted, the 2022 budget isn't in the system yet, they're anticipating delay in having free cash certified, they're concerned that scheduling will not be filed prior to November 30, which potentially would impact our local aid being delivered to us, setting the tax rate before December, then having to wait until the final bills are out, impacting cash, and then having a person in the position to assist in the preparation of the next budget in a timely fashion. They will be requesting a standalone meeting, or they're going to ask respectfully for a standalone meeting with the Select Board, where this is the sole subject for 90 to 120 minutes, to strategize and develop a roadmap out of this with the, in a collaborative format, collaborative form. At the end of the day, it's up to the Select Board to set the budget, or approve the budget as the town's chief policymaker. I have a typo here, I print ARP, but the committee also discussed the possibility of asking for the cumulative, a portion of the $1.8 million in funds coming in to be used to upgrade the software system and potentially outsource the payroll, or modernize it. And the committee as a whole, as well as the, I took this as a positive side, as well as the Town Treasurer Collector and myself, will be attending a August 4 seminar, put on by Department of Local Services, called the Yarmouth Tax Rate Recap Process. Yarmouth is routinely amongst the first communities to have its tax rate recapulation sheet submitted to the DLS each year, and in the webinar, we'll learn about how their collaboration and financial management team approach has created an automated tax recap process, and we'll see if we can glean any ideas away from that to incorporate here in the town. Personnel Policy Procedure Board met on July 15 with four of the five members present. The first item was a joint session with the Board of Assessors. There was a lengthy discussion about consideration of increasing the potential compensation for the Principal Assessor. The Board explained to the Board of Assessors that whole process, and if they wanted to look, the only way the Board could consider that would be by revised job description. They took that back with them. Took up two PCFs, which I believe will be up later on the agenda, and we received, they received one communication from a citizen of the town, asking for reconsideration on implementing a formal employee review process. That led to another healthy conversation from several members of the public. And then last, or second to last, the Board discussed its uncertainty on its role forward, and is unsure whether they now need to follow the May 18 ruling of the Select Board, which in their view, they didn't believe a public hearing was held, as was required, and therefore they're not sure whether that's now the law of the town, or if they should continue under the June 23, 2016 personal bylaws. After another lengthy discussion, it was agreed to send a formal communication, which was attached via the Town Administrator to KP Law, so they can get guidance for going forward. And then the last thing, which I think will come up probably in another month or so, is there are several potential adjustments to the policy bylaw, but it was just a running list, so the Clerk is going to attach that to the bylaws and redline it all, so that it'll be easier to decipher what changes they're suggesting, and that'll come back.
And will that also come to the Bylaw Committee, the General Bylaws Committee?
I don't know for sure, but I would assume so, this would just be the draft and a recommendation out of the committee, and then follow whatever process it is.
Okay, all right.
I do have just a comment on the Assessor, restoring the position. While I was on the PQ. While I was on the PQB, there were, there's a precedent set of rescored positions based on existing job descriptions, not revised job descriptions. So, are we setting a whole new, because technically, I would agree with this, that in order to rescore a position, it'll be based on changing job responsibilities and duties. But that has not been consistently applied. So, I just wanna bring it to your attention, in the hope that you bring it to their attention, and that whatever going forward becomes the standard practice and is consistent for everything.
And my understanding is that the board just rescored that position, maybe a month or two months before?
But there were, there were others that were rescored based on existing, not, not new proposed descriptions.
Okay, yeah, I think some level of consistency is needed here. We've had mixed-
Hi.
...understanding, yes?
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector, the assessor job was just rescored based on the existing job description, like John said, two or three months ago.
That's not what you said.
I, I thought they provided a new job description two or three months ago.
New? Oh, okay.
Or an updated one? I can go back to my notes.
Okay, yeah, I could be wrong. I thought it was also existing, but during that timeframe when they were all existing job descriptions were rescored.
Right.
I could be wrong.
Okay.
But from the Select Board's point of view, I understand the, and I agree, that this is what it is. If you want us to look at a new number, then there has to be something new before the body.
Normally, something, I mean, in my experience, normally, something would've changed in that person's duties, whether it's a supervisory level, or some extra duties that have been incurred, or something else. So, that's usually been my experience, that that would be why you would wanna bring something to PQB, to have it rescored. So, I don't know how it's been applied, but that's usually been the practice. Any comments?
Now, can I just ask you to repeat what you said about a concern that was brought by the public? I didn't hear what you said.
There was an email communication that was part of the record of the PPP, PPPB Board, a gentleman by the name of Jim Palermo.
Oh, yeah.
P-A-L-E-R-M-O.
Yeah, Glamour, yeah.
Glamour. Where he, he requested the board reconsider its prior position to implement, of implementing a formal employee review process. He was against it.
Okay, yeah, he was a former PQB member, too.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? Joy, would you like to go next?
Sure.
Since you have your-
Okay, so, the Southampton Conservation Commission met on July 19th. There was, should I, I know this is different than some of the boards, but there are like personal, like, applications, that, that's something that-
You wouldn't necessarily go into anybody's name and individual-
No, no, of course not.
But you can talk about whether there were NOIs or-
Generals, okay.
Semeraries, whatever requested, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, okay.
Right.
So, there was an ANRAD, and it has been, it was not approved, there's riverfront dilionation issues between the Conservation Commission, and they're having a peer review done. So, there's a reduction of the boundaries, and they need to, and there was a discrepancy between the applicant and what was reviewed. There were some paperworks, or some documents that were submitted right before the meeting as well, so the Conservation Commission wanted to take another two weeks before they voted on it. So, that was delayed to the next meeting. There was a beaver dam, which the Highway Department went down and saved the beavers, and they moved on to the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary. We did get that additional grant to go into Phase Two. I think this meeting was right before we found out about the grant, actually.
Yes, it was.
So, they didn't discuss it particularly, but luckily, we did get the Phase Two. They were waiting to hear about it. And they were meeting, they're meeting on June 30th, or they met on June 30th for what would be needed for the contract John Kane is doing, doing the work for the bridge there. There's a fourth-
Oh, sorry, that contract has been signed, is that, or?
Um, I know that we met with them, so I don't know if it was signed yet, to see what, what would, the work that would need to be done.
Okay.
I think he was going to view it to give an estimate. Forest tree work update, the Clark Chapman House is being worked on, as we know, the brush needs to be picked up. So, there was a call-out to anyone from the Conservation Commission that wanted to move the invasives that were around there and bring them to the dump, instead of just leaving them there. There was a new member that was interviewed. Since then, they have rescinded their application due to issues with communication with the town. So, we are still, they're still looking for, for new members. So, if anyone is interested in the Conservation Commission, please reach out. And then there was a communication in regards to, from the public in regards to potential wetlands on the edge of Labree Field, and asking the Conservation Commission to look into it.
Okay.
It was a pretty short meeting. Planning Board meeting was held July 21st, 2021. The meeting was opened with a stormwater application, and it's a vacant lot. There is a farm nearby, there's a lot of concerns in regards to the runoff. The Planning Board was concerned if there should be a silt fence or sock along the roadway, but the, where, where the property is located, it's below the roadway, so the runoff actually isn't going to go into the roadway. That was also a concern that the Highway Department communicated to Planning Board, but from the looks of the plans, it doesn't seem that it is going to be an issue. Should I be reading off property, property numbers?
Don't really need to.
Okay.
I think I would keep it somewhat general.
Okay, I will, okay.
Those are there for anybody, anybody who wants to look at these-
Absolutely.
-that would be in the actual individual meeting-
Sure.
-records on file.
Absolutely. There was an A&R application that was approved, and an A&R, two A&R applications that were approved by the, the board. There was supposed to be a working session to go over the zoning bylaw revisions with Consultant Larry Smith. He had, he was unable to attend, so we're going to go over at the next meeting. The bylaws need to be reviewed, so-
Is that one bylaw, or several bylaws, zoning bylaw?
It was several. It looks like, in general, the zoning bylaws need to be reviewed.
Gotcha.
There were three bullet building permits that were discussed, elections of the officers, and then the communication from the Highway Department in regards to the runoff on the road for that application. The warrants, there was Pitch Farm and Gill Farm where subdivisions were approved, and in regards to, they discussed the solar energy bylaw, the, and there was a question if we had a wind energy bylaw, and we do not. So, that's something that we are going to look over, and then, talk about at the next We discussed collaboration with the Open Space Committee, and more communication with them, together, also with the Conservation Commission, to, to make sure there's more strategic planning on all the boards. And I said I would, I would kind of implement that as a liaison to those boards as well. In regards to, there was a discussion in regards to the new Airbnb case law that we had seen, that communication from KP Law. I was going to look into further the zone, our zoning bylaws, to see if there was, what's going on with, how our residential and single-family is defined, and, and leasing, long-term leasing versus short-term leasing, so I could go back to their next meeting to discuss it, and see if there needs to be some kind of revision to accommodate Airbnbs, or something that we need to actually discuss, because we, we do know that people in town do offer their homes as Airbnbs, and it might be a concern, so we wanna address that.
Probably ought to regularize that if that's happening.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, good, thanks. All right. Any questions for Joy on her reports? If not, Francine?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll go next. The Board of Health met on July 14th, and we reviewed, you know, an update of the mosquito surveillance information that's available to the town, and the control program that's, that we're a part of. Just to let everyone know that we did not develop a customized agreement, which means then that the state not only has the ability to do surveillance, but they also have the ability to come in and determine which means of control. But we will have an opportunity next year, and they are considering developing an alternate control plan for the next year. However, the numbers, you know, despite that, for the week ending July 10th, for West Nile virus and Triple E virus, among the populations tested, they tested, obviously, they tested mosquitoes, and there was one West Nile virus positive. They tested horses and, one horse or orchid, they don't specify. They tested one, and it was, it was negative. And human surveillance, they tested 34, and, and none were positive for either. So, that's, that's good information for us to know, under the current arrangement that we have. We also, they also discussed the three-year agreement that the Select Board and the Board of Health signed with the Town of North Hampton for a coalition, which would facilitate information sharing of importance, especially during this time of, of continuing COVID. That agreement is for three years. It can be renewed at the end of that three-year period for six or nine additional years. The next Board of Health meeting is scheduled for August 11th. The bylaw committee met on July 15th. The major focus is moving along the soliciting, the nuisance peace and quiet bylaw, and the building numbering bylaw. Those three are on tonight's agenda for review by, by this group. But more importantly, the discussion of the, of the committee was focused on, how do we get the drafts out to the public and get some feedback? And that would be through the posting it, those three bylaws, draft bylaws on the town website, setting up an email account so that we can gather individuals' comments, and then arranging for a public meeting, at which time those comments would be shared, in addition to gathering others with members of the public who are interested in attending that meeting. Right now, that we're looking, the timeframe would be, we would post the, the three bylaws for the month of August, then early September, probably after Labor Day, we would have a public meeting on the subject, depending upon, you know, the outcome of that and the revisions made. We would again present the documents to the Select Board before asking our lawyers to review them, and then moving them forward to the special, next scheduled special town meeting, whenever that is. Hopefully, in the fall. The next bylaw meeting is scheduled for August 5th. And then finally, you know, that we had received a small grant award through PBPC for, to, to examine the feasibility of a regional HR resource of, in which Southampton would participate. Nothing has really happened up to now, although I've, I've been contacted by the project manager who says we're gonna be getting a call and setting up our first meeting either this week or next week. So, I'll have more to report on that, but at, at least it's, it's now, it's now in process, it's in the lineup, so.
Yeah, that's-
And that's it for, that's it for me.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Francine, what committee would be the lead on that HR regional thing?
I would, I would assume that the committee would, would be with, most likely with the PQB. They would have to be made aware and, and brought in. But right now, it's just looking at the feasibility of it. It's really not, unfortunately, not setting up a system or service that would support us.
And if, if they follow suit like they had done before, until we have a first meeting with the folks from PBPC and other towns that may be included in this, until they develop their scope of work and show us what they're aiming to do for us, with us, it's hard to know, because it may be more than just PQB, it may be other committees that might be, might need to be involved, depending on how they define the regionalization portion of it.
Okay.
But this has been on the books since, what, early this spring, I think, right?
So, who reached out to you, Francine?
I thought it was even earlier than that.
Yeah, PBPC themselves.
The project manager, Eric Weiss.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, they had started, we had two, two DLTA grants in the spring. One is for the Housing Commission, and they've actually already started. And then this one has been on hold for months and months.
Okay, yeah.
And so, it's the proposal Francine and I drafted to put forth to DLTA, to PBPC.
Right, right, right.
So, we'll, we'll see what the scope of work comes, and, you know, we're, you know, how we wanna go with this. I'd like Francine to start with this at least, and then if that, you know, doesn't seem to be the most appropriate, certainly, John, as the rep from PQB can, can join in if you've got time to. So, we'll sort of wait to see how they go.
There's a third DLTA also, which is the second phase of that regional one for the historic canal study.
Canal, right, for the Historic Commission, that's right. So, there's three of those, and they've been at varying stages of, of getting started. Yeah, okay, yeah. Lucy, question?
I just wanted to, I have to say my name again. Lucy Dalton, Ten Strong Road, Town Clerk. I just wanted to follow up on the bylaws. So, the ECO 360 program, the contract has been signed, it was signed July 1st, and we are waiting to hear when the first steps are to get that program running.
Okay.
They're gonna send out the first invoice, we have to pay 10% of the total cost, 30 days after the contract is signed, but they're gonna send a rep out to meet with the bylaw committee and myself to-
Great.
-start the process going, so.
Good.
Just wanted to update you on that.
That'll be something to look forward to, and hopefully, make life easier for the bylaw committee.
We'll have to plug them in on the continuum of work.
Yeah, right.
That's good to know.
Yeah, that is good, yeah.
Will that affect the current or current bylaws, or any future updates or whatever?
Not necessarily. I mean, they would have a lot to do with the things that have already been recently approved, you know, to get those codified into their, their formatting-
Right, right.
-and, and stuff online.
Do they have draft bylaws?
Yeah. They, I mean, there's multiple towns, and we've often gone to other towns through the ecosystem to take some inspiration of the language that they've used in some of these.
But the bylaws committee will still need to do the wordsmithing and all of that, or do they present draft bylaws for consideration?
Well, I think we would still have to develop and, and identify the bylaws, and develop them and draft them, and then pass them on to them, so that-
That's correct.
-they can, can check how compliant anything is with existing state regulations, and probably put it in language that's more, you know, help us draft, improve the language at all. And I'm hoping, honestly, if, if, if they do this before our documents end up going to the attorneys, that ultimately, we could save legal fees, because it would be an easier review process for the lawyers, now that it's gone through, you know, this system, which has a lot of expertise-
Right.
-in, in developing appropriate, compliant-
Yeah.
Right, we'll send them the wording, they'll review and do what they do, and then they will send a draft back to the Select Board and the bylaw committee to review, to okay, just give them the final yes, and then, then they will put it into the codification program. So, it's a great program. It really is, it's gonna help this town a lot, so.
So, speaking of the bylaws, do we pay attorney to review the bylaws before town meeting, and then pay the attorney to review the warrant for the town meeting, and then it goes to the Attorney General for approval afterwards? Is that all part of routine business? It seems like a lot.
Yeah, except if they've already reviewed a bylaw that's going on the warrant, they're not gonna review it as part of the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, they would review it first before we put it on the warrant, usually, and wordsmith anything, that's been the case, I think, where they would've recommended any changes to the wording before we actually put it on the warrant.
Yeah.
But then, after the Attorney General responds, should there be any, like there was with the wetlands bylaw, there was a question there that-
Right, yeah.
-then what did go back to our attorneys to look at.
Right, yeah.
But normally, after the Attorney General responds, KP Law would not look at it again, in my understanding.
Once the Attorney General approves it, that's the decision that needs to be-
That should be sufficient, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, once the Attorney General decides-
Right.
-that's when the bylaw takes effect.
Well, technically, it doesn't take effect until we post it.
Right, right.
But yes, approved and posted.
Until it's posted, but I post it immediately, the date of the decision is made, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My report is very short.
My report is very short. Council on Aging didn't meet in July, so they're meeting next Wednesday, the 4th, at 4:00 PM. The Board of Assessors, John already talked about, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but it was a joint meeting with PQB, so John already told you what happened with the Board of Assessors, assessors and the job description and all that. And then lastly, CPC did meet last week on a quote unquote, routine business. They discussed some of the previous projects. They also talked about the presence, having a presence at the Celebrate Southampton, which is coming up very quickly. And then lastly, they did talk in general about a Historical Commission project. You just mentioned it. It's basically about the canal. It's a regional thing with a number of other towns about the canal being part of the National Registry. They invited, they're going to invite a representative or two to come to the CPC meeting to actually give more detail on that particular project. And it's not, it was, it was just an initial discussion about, that's the only project that's in front of CPC right now.
Okay.
But you just mentioned about funding from another source. Is that for the same project, a DLTA grant? Didn't you just mention about the canal, Historical Commission?
Yeah, it's a DLTA for the second phase of that, which is regional.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Chris had only mentioned two, so I just brought up the fact that there is a third.
Okay, so now they're looking for CPC funding for probably some level of match, maybe that has to happen.
Right, right.
Could be.
Okay, good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Well, that comes down to me, and I must say, with our changing assignments, I feel like I've been on vacation for a week. I don't have a whole lot to say. The, the one thing, Tech Committee is actually meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00, and they're going to be, you know, doing follow-up, certainly with Ed on the the next and hopefully final deployment of the laptops, but then looking to, we're going to bring up the topic of whether or not there's more we can do with the broadband, maybe under the ARPA funds, if there's a subcommittee of those guys or some other group that wants to get formed to work on some broadband internet connection issues. We're going to talk about that. And there's some possibilities for some website design companies that work exclusively with various municipalities to improve their websites. It costs money, so we're going to be trying to look and trying to figure out sources of funding. So far, we haven't come across any grant funding for those kinds of things, but I did put out a call to PBPC to find out whether they knew of any from themselves and/or the state that might provide some funding to help us pay for website development and monitoring. So that's about it on that.
Could I add a grant if you could?
Sorry?
This is not that, are you sure?
Possibly, maybe. That's when it's on our schedule coming up, yeah.
What about the, the American Rescue Funds?
That's the ARPA, that's what I was meaning, that that could be not necessarily, probably not for website development. I think that would be a tough one, but for broadband kinds of things, I think that would fit into that infrastructure subcategory that they have kind of carved out there from my, from my reading of what I've seen anyway so far for guidance on that. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that. But there's several, several towns that are using one or two main vendors for their websites, and we'll follow up on that a bit more.
May I amend my report in regards to, I apologize, I am also liaison for Housing Authority in Open Space, but they didn't meet these past two weeks. But there is an upcoming meeting for Housing Authority for the public's information, August 2nd, 2021 via Zoom.
Okay, good. All right, good, all right. So that brings us down to the next one, which is the Ad Hoc Grant Committee, which I guess I can talk about. So we've, we've met as usual, basically spent time catching up on on approving minutes that had been lagging. We had all been recording our meetings on Zoom and had posted those through East Hampton Media. Those have all been up on our website, but the written minutes had not gotten approved. So we were able to do all that. And basically, what we've learned since that meeting, as Ed mentioned, we found out from the Mass Trails grant application that we had put in, that we received $100,000 toward the right-of-way acquisition for the Greenway. We had actually put in for $300,000, so we didn't get all that we asked for. But that's not unusual with this Mass Trails grant. I think that happened to Concom last year as well. So that's part of the Greenway one, and then, as Ed mentioned, Concom received $50,000 from Mass Trails for Part Two of Manhattan Meadows, and it's primarily dedicated toward replacing the suspension bridge over the Manhattan, which is quite shaky. We are, we submitted our final application from the Park Commission to the PARK, P-A-R-C, grant program, and we won't know about that one until the end of the year. And currently, we're exploring with Mass DOT the idea of a feasibility study, whether Mass DOT would pay for a feasibility study to help improve the pickup line at Norris School and all the traffic blockage. We've had a request from the Chief of Police and the school principal to take a look at that and figure out some alternative ideas to improve the safety and efficacy of that whole scenario. There are days that we've all seen it where it's extended way beyond from the school way out to Route 10. So usually, the Mass DOT programs that are out there are more hard infrastructure kinds of things, but we're hoping that they will equate, maybe fund a feasibility study that would help us sort that out. So we put in the request anyway, just to see if they would look at a scope of work and give us an idea about that. So we should find out about that soon.
Just can I just say that that was actually evaluated? I'm trying to think of who it, who did it. I think it was before.
There was one done. I think Randall had told us, and I'm trying to remember, but I don't know that it covered the entire thing of what we're thinking about at the present time. One of the ideas that's come up is whether or not we might consider rerouting completely and coming up Gun Road Extension instead.
That was one of the plans, and also putting in a separate driveway that, so there was, I don't know who drafted it, but I do believe there was a plan in the past that was discussed. Do you know who paid for that?
I can look it up.
Yeah.
I think I have the paperwork.
Yeah, okay. I can't, I know Randall mentioned it. I don't know if I got any paperwork from him on that. But at any rate, DOT is at least willing to take a look at it and let us know whether it's in their bailiwick or not. It may not be anything they want to do. And the last thing we're looking at is the Safe Streets to Schools program has approached us, asking about any other ideas we have for that program. And again, Randall has let us know that, you know, he was involved with that back in about 2017, I think, when all the, the new sidewalks got developed around Norris and over by Cumbes, et cetera, but has not had much, I think, to do with safe streets since then. I mean, there's not been any new, new programming in that regard. They have reached out, asking if we've got some things that we would be interested in doing. So we're going to continue talking with Randall and them and see what's maybe possible for that, too, if there are other sidewalk projects he has in mind that we don't know about. But if it's limited to the school, I don't know what more we can do exactly. So we need to have a phone call and find out more about that. So that's kind of where we are with the Grant Committee. Basically, we're also just taking a break. We've been meeting pretty much weekly, and we're taking a break until August 18th. So the Grant Committee is on
Well deserved.
The Grant Committee is on vacation.
You guys have been very productive. Thank you.
Well, we've, we've been lucky with the three, we've got three grants that have been approved and two that are in the hopper, so we'll see how we are. But just, you know, sometimes it just takes the right timing and, you know, just being willing to get out there and do it. So again, thanks to the committee people that have been helping on this. It's certainly not me alone. Everybody's been chipping in, and especially with the, the various people in town that have come to us saying, hey, look, could we think about a grant for this? This is something we've got for an idea, but we've never had the time to do it. You know, could you help us? And so we've done some research and tried to see if any of that can make sense. Sometimes there's a lot of grants that are just not eligible. We're just not eligible. They're not, they're not the right size, they're not the right thing, or we've got too many prerequisites that we don't qualify for. But these, we happen to, happen to fit just right, so. Okay, so thank you for all those reports. Let's move on. Quarterly reports, we have none tonight, but that will be changing. We will get to that momentarily on the schedule in terms of scheduling the department and committee reporting. That's something we definitely want to get back on a routine business for the, for basically all of our agenda, for all of our meetings, rather. So moving on to old business, a lot of these, I'm going to turn over pretty much to Ed, starting with the accountant position update.
Sure, and I'm going to actually group the accountant position and the assistant accountant position update together. And we did receive, I think, three new applications for the accountant position and three new applications for the assistant accounting position.
Okay.
I won't say how strong or whatever they are, but I have sent those along to Francine and John for their opinions on of those who we should follow through and schedule interviews with.
Okay.
So in the last probably half week or so, we have seen some, and uptick, uptick both in Indeed and received some via email and someone was personally hand-delivered, so.
And we have a level of many municipal experience, or are we still lagging in that?
Lagging, lacking in municipal experience, absolutely, yeah.
Not totally unexpected in that regard, I think. I mean, at this point in time, and I, you know, that's, that's good to hear. I mean, I think, I mean, to the extent that they all look pretty good on paper, it would be nice to get some interviews done, and certainly over this next two weeks. We, we've got to get moving on this and get these positions filled. John?
So for, at least my benefit, maybe Joy's, what is the process? Who does traditionally, who would do the interviews? When would those happen? Like, what's the process?
Usually, correct me if I'm wrong, usually what we've done in the past is when we've delegated somebody from the Select Board to be that person for us rather than the entire Select Board, be that person and Ed, and then if it was a relevant department, that department head.
And on this one, we did have the Chair of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee at that time, yeah, on the other ones that you did, yeah. So basically, it would not, not be a full board interview, usually partly because all of our timing and our schedules is just too crazy to try and schedule that. So at this point in time, it's been Francine and Ed working on it, and I guess we could see if we needed a third person or more. We can certainly talk about that.
Would the intent be for that body, that group to bring a recommendation back to be acted upon, or just to whittle it down to the final two? I mean, at some point, do all five board, some board members get to weigh in?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is the preliminary part of it. So, yeah, the thought, thought process would be whether it's, you know, two or three to recommend to the full board to do an interview with.
Yeah, and then we would do the final interviews as, as the board, right?
Right.
That's what we've done in the past. Yeah, so, so the very final interview, final candidates, we would all interview. So good, so let's, I'm going to leave it to you guys to work out a schedule.
I'll be, I'll be happy to coordinate a schedule for next week and see who of the, of these candidates we can get in.
Yeah, I think, I think whoever, you know.
I'll coordinate the schedule, but honestly, I mean, with your background, you would be an important
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, because I know they came out late in the afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to read them all, or I'm, I'm almost of the, my thought process coming in here is there's four that applied for auditor, town accountant, and three for the assistant.
Right.
It's seven people. I almost say, you block a day, I'm, I'm happy to free my schedule up, and we just power through all of them because, again, we have the, the financial issue to deal with, but it's possible that, that we may fight our two candidates on the town accountant side, and, and maybe one of them outshines the other, and then that second person, we want to offer the assistant position to.
Yeah.
I know that, you know, they didn't necessarily apply for that, but
Yeah, it's a possibility. Okay.
And worst case, the preliminary board votes that, you know what, there's nobody here. Well, then we got it, you know?
So this is at least good news that we have candidates.
Yeah, no, this is great. So let's, we'll leave it to you, Francine, to help drive the ship here and coordinate this and get
I like your idea of doing everybody the same day, because it kind of gives you the same, you know, eyesight and, you know, you're in the same mode there.
And if we give them a week's notice, this is the day it's going to be, here's the window of times available, first, first one to pick, you lock it out.
Yeah.
You know, and it may also reveal how motivated they are
Sure, that too.
to come and do the interview.
So either, either that, all in one day, or you could think about possibly dividing it up, so you did all the accountant ones in one half a day or whatever, and then the assistants in the other half a day. If, if a full block day is, is a huge amount for everybody, then, you know, maybe half and half would be good.
That would be
But maybe starting with the accountant position itself, so that we can, like you say, if we find somebody who might be possible as a, as an assistant accountant, that might be the way to, to move on.
Maybe.
Good, great news on that, so thank you. And Francine, I'll let you run with that, and we should assume that you will have done some
I'll just coordinate, yes.
Some preliminary things before we meet next on August 10th.
Right, hopefully.
Yes, Lucy, are you, are you busy with questions tonight? I'd like to get through the meeting, but go ahead.
I'm not on Zoom anymore, so I can ask.
You're, you're giving me my task as chair, right?
No, I just wanted to say that if you are doing any interviews here in the second floor meeting room, the auditors are coming out August 4th and 5th, and they'll be there all day, so just so you know it's booked already.
Yeah, okay, good, good to know. Well, we can find other spaces maybe, too. Good.
That's good news, too.
Okay, great, all right. Glad to hear that. All right, moving on. Audit update, then.
And the auditors were able to get most of what they needed through the remote connection, but have worked with them, and they are scheduled to come in and do the physical part of their work next Wednesday and Thursday, so hopefully we're close to a completion.
Good, okay.
And just a, sorry, and just a question on that. I saw your response out to S&amp;P or Moody's, one of them, asking about the extension. Did you get any feedback, or did they just shut us down, downgrade us?
No, they actually gave us 30 days, shall we say. I won't say a total grace period, but if we, if we're able to get them what they need in that 30 days, even starting with a draft form, they will consider that, and we wouldn't have to, what's the term?
Do another rating?
Yeah, regrade or rerate, yeah, okay.
Can I have a question? Is there a penalty for not getting it in?
The penalty would be having to do another rating.
Oh, another rating, okay.
So our bonds rating would go down, so it would be higher interest cost and more.
And I believe there's a $12,000 cost associated with the rating?
Correct.
We have to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Safe City were like in a 30-day grace period.
Right.
Right, and at this point, based on what you know, you're not anticipating the outside auditors going beyond that point to get them what they need?
At least, at least for the draft stuff, yes.
And they'll take a draft if it's available within 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, they said they would.
Good, all right. Moving on.
Is that something we should follow up on?
I think Ed is in charge of dealing with it. I think if he's had that conversation, we'll keep on moving with that. I mean, I think that's, if they've agreed to take a draft, then let's, let's do that.
S&amp;Ps and Moody's both have the 30 days.
Jen, would you like to come up and ask a question officially?
Sorry. It's curious because it wasn't communicated to me, so it is, you know what I do. But Jennifer Day, treasure collector, was it S&amp;Ps and Moody's both that offered to do the 30-day extension?
I'd have to go back and look. One of them actually responded to me and the other didn't.
Okay.
Okay. Can I ask a relative question? So our contract, did we check to see if in fact our contract with Melinson is up?
I have not found the contract as a, yet, so, and I haven't actually made it a huge priority. I've been trying to get the audit stuff lined up, so.
Okay.
Can you get back to us about the 30-day extension and who, who it's from?
What's that?
Can you get back to us
Sure.
about the 30-day extension and who it's from?
Okay.
Because if it's from S&amp;P, S&amp;B?
S&amp;P.
Yeah, S&amp;P, yes. That means no penalty?
And disimprove.
Who sets the penalty? I'm sorry, I'm just for clarification purposes, the state sets
We have, we have a rating from S&amp;P and Moody's. There's three different rating agencies, two of them have rated us.
So S&amp;P rated our recent bond issue in May of 2020.
Okay.
And Moody's has rated everything prior. So depending on, you know, which one we reached out to or which extension, it would affect those rating, like those bond issuances or no issuances.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Route 10 Bridge Water Main, where are we with that?
It's just about completed. They anticipate the predominant amount of work will be completed in the next two weeks. They're into the testing phase, and they still have to do a tie-in up by former road. But just to let you know that even when that predominant amount of work is done, some of the repaving that they have already completed is a preliminary repaving, and they will actually let that sit for, you know, a month or two to actually settle before they actually do the final paving coat on that. But like I say, they anticipate that the predominant work and the full tie-in will be done in the next two weeks.
Good. Okay, great. All right. And then our usual East Street Bridge updates.
And actually, we have a teleconference scheduled tomorrow with the contractor and also Hoyok Gas and Electric for the cross-sectional boring to go over some items to make sure everybody is in line with that. The contractor actually has to do some preliminary work with National Heritage due to the turtles, and I think it's a muscle, and I think another agency. But we just want to go over everything to coordinate between those two entities, because actually Hoyok Gas and Electric would be able to physically actually do the cross boring before they started to work on the bridge. But a number of items have to happen for even them to be able to start on the cross boring, to take the gas pipe off the bridge and actually move it down and under the river.
And remind us the sort of the start date of some physical work out there? That was estimated?
We don't have an estimate for the actual start.
Not yet.
Any of the start, yeah. I mean, like I say, contractor has to work through some state agencies first.
All right. So you know more after you have the telecon on that coverage? Okay, good. All right. That, I think, takes us through the old business, and we'll move on to new business.
I just have just one point of order, I guess.
Yep.
I don't know where it's going to fall in here, but the last meeting we had, the PFC.
PCF.
Thank you. The PCF, not the wire department ones, but the highway one that we sent back for things. So I interpreted that to mean that we were tabling it here, which would leave it under old business.
Yeah, it didn't come in, yeah, without it being, we didn't get paperwork from PQB. Certainly, I didn't see it before Thursday, so I didn't have it on the agenda. But I understand that you were at the meeting and you have the information about what happened, so we could.
Where would be the appropriate spot to bring it up?
At this point in time, since it didn't make the agenda, I would bring it up under any other business. It can't wait until next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Select Board priorities. This is a discussion, I think, we started maybe a couple of meetings ago. Rini had handed out a list of Select Board priorities that we had talked about last year in particular. And it was kind of broken out into two or three sections, but one was on infrastructure and economic development, and the other was on community and employee benefits. And those, just to refresh our minds, under the infrastructure one was all related to East Street Bridge and the East Street itself, construction, public safety complex, community solar, limited sewer on Route 10, and fiber-optic municipal light district. So those were the basic infrastructure ones. And then under the second section, it was talking about disability insurance. And again, these were goals for last year. So disability insurance, senior and affordable housing, preserving strategic open space, the Greenway, and up-to-date IT capability, safety and maintenance. I believe that was related to Town Hall. And then the HRHS Regional Agreement Review. So those were goals that we had put out there. We started working on a few of them. And I think after what we've just heard tonight, East Street Bridge seems to be chugging along. It's been a long haul, but I think we're all glad to see that moving. But I think we would like to, I would like to suggest that we need to kind of narrow down what our goals are for this year and figure out how they fit, probably tying it in with the master plan. The master plan update that we did last year has been posted up on the website. But I will just go over the couple of top priorities that came out of that. The first one was acquiring the land to complete the bike path from Sheldon's to East Hampton Line. That was the first priority, as voted on by the residents that replied to the survey. And there were over 875 residents, I believe, that responded to the survey. The second one was to develop a public utility to improve internet broadband service that would generate revenue for the town. Third priority, purchase land to preserve open space. Fourth, pursue renewable energy generation, i.e. solar on town-owned land. Fifth, develop bicycle paths and greenways that link open spaces and neighborhoods. Six, buy land to build a public safety complex. Seven, invest in public sewer water provision. And eight, build or repurpose existing municipal buildings for multi-use meeting and community center. So taking the master plan prioritization that came out, as well as some of the goals that we had had last year, I was trying to figure out a way that we could kind of marry these out and figure out if we could pick out maybe two or three things that we wanted to commit ourselves to doing this year, to really focus on revitalizing in many cases and putting some energy toward making some headway. From my own perspective, I will say that I think we've started making a lot of headway on the bike path, obviously with the grants. And the Greenway Committee is getting itself up and running again. They have a new chairman. I think that will start to take off pretty much generically, organically now. Certainly, the Open Space Committee has been very heavily involved in all the work that they're doing and trying to map out and prioritize any lands that might be desirable to conserve in the future. The ones that have not really had much effort at this point in time, that come up in those top three or four, would be the developing the public utility to improve broadband service and working on the public safety complex. Those, I think, tie into ones that were left over from the goals from last year, along with looking at possibly some public sewer options along Route 10 corridor, if those are possible. So with those three things, we know that we've got the rescue plan money. We're still trying to figure out exactly all the infrastructure-type things that that might cover. But I'm wondering whether we feel like we should narrow down at least a couple of these to be our sort of march forward for 2022 in terms of trying to make actual progress on public safety complex and/or exploring the broadband internet option in town. So that would be a question I'm posing to anybody for discussion, or if you think there are other priorities that we should focus on. I think, I guess I've often found it helpful to try and narrow things down and pick out one or two things that we can really get our teeth into and try to support whatever committees get involved. People that are on those committees try to help provide whatever resources we can to get them going and off the dime, so that we can make some real progress. These have been hanging around as issues, especially the public safety complex for a long time. Land has been obviously a stumbling block from the grants committee. We looked into a couple of grants with the state, and they had very little interest in supporting the funding of a public safety complex. Other towns have been more successful in different ways. They're doing probably a smaller scale than what we had originally anticipated. But for the two new members especially, you may know that we have the land behind the current fire station. That was actually bought by the town, and that is still land that we own that, you know, could be possibly looked at again. We've looked at different parcels around town, especially other town-owned land, and nothing really fits the bill with the distance that both the fire and police chief would like to have covering one end of town to the other, et cetera. So, anyway, I'm just opening that up for discussion, but I would like us, I think, tying in with the master plan and trying to help operationalize some of that, to see if we would agree on putting forth a couple of priorities to tackle. And just looking from my point of view, that the Greenway and open space, I think, are, they're chugging along on their own pretty well right now, or starting, at least with the Greenway. And, you know, where do we want to put our energies and efforts on that? So any thoughts and discussion on that?
Could I just add one thing for other items for consideration?
Sure.
Looking at alternative ways of providing services in the town that could be more cost-effective, so that, you know, our costs go up every year. There's, we have no control over that. That's external.
Right.
And yet, you know, our revenue does not go up appreciably to keep pace with it.
Right.
We need to devise another way of delivering service, of creating service.
Yeah.
And seeing if we can't form some collaborations, coalitions, whatever, but having an ad hoc group look at something like that.
That's actually another agenda item.
Oh.
So we'll get to that in a minute. But yes, I think that is something that we ought to consider as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I see it here.
Yeah, it's a little bit further down, but it's in this new business discussion section. So anyway, those are ideas. I know the housing folks are working on updating their affordable, their housing production plan and through that's through the grant with the PVPC. So they're also moving forward on that one. I guess somebody will have to remind me what we thought we were doing with the disability insurance. We had brought it up. We got to a point. We had a presentation, and we kind of liked it, and then it.
It was on the override budget.
Yeah, kind of died on the vine. So I don't know whether we're still committed to looking at a separate disability insurance plan or not. That would be one of the other items that are on here as well.
I would put that in that category of how other ways to do things.
Possibly, yeah. Okay. Any thoughts, though, in terms of what would be the priorities that you would like to see us kind of work on this year? I mean, I think, I'd like to have some level of direction, so that not every meeting, but certainly every couple months, we could have an updated report of, you know, where are we, you know, in terms of moving forward?
So I think everything that you already said are all excellent items to move forward. I would be hard-pressed to rank them in a particular order and put one over the other.
Yeah.
But I think I'm going to kind of somewhat piggyback on Francine here, is I think the overall financial health of the town, and that's a very broad statement, needs to be a priority. I mean, I, you know, it's no secret, because I campaigned on the fact I think we should have a five-year budget, not a 365-day budget. And, you know, the internal mechanisms right now within the town, the stress is at an all-time high. And I think the Select Board is the only body that can force itself into the conversation and bring all the parties concerned to the table. And I'm sure some of the discussions will be heated. But I do think, at least everyone that I've met on my wonderful assignments that you guys gave me.
That you volunteered for.
I know.
That you volunteered for.
Has been, you know, their hearts are all, everyone's heart is in the right spot.
Sure.
So I just think, you know, it's always, it's always good to have goals and measurable, and it's always good to have that stretch goal to get. But we could have an easy goal, too. How about just getting the budget done according to our timeline? You know, so that's, would encompass a lot of these other things, which we take into consideration. You know, do we need to do X, whatever it is? Can we outsource that? Can we, can we explore this HR service, which we're going to anyways?
Okay.
You know, a lot of things could fall underneath that.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's an interesting, interesting way to look at it, is putting that as the overall goal in general. And then some of the other things might fall underneath it as other committees work. Any other thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm going to piggyback off that. I think a lot of the barriers to the goals from the past year and the past years has been financial. And the, you know, open space, the safety complex, public broadband, goals that we have but we can't achieve because we don't have the finances. And if we aren't financially able to do, it's great to have these goals, but the town is kind of struggling financially. They're always going to be out of reach. So I will, you know, between the community survey and what the last year's goals were, you know, these are things I'm going to keep in mind when I'm sitting in the boards, where I see the opportunities. But I think John is right, like, we need to focus on finances and the services, as Francine was talking about.
Okay. Rini, any thoughts?
I think that, you know, the residents spoke loud and clear about the Greenway. Not only did they come up number one on the master plan, but they also supported it as a debt exclusion. I was, so I think that that is something that is definitely wanted in this town. I also, you know, when they, when the sidewalks were put in Palmory Meadow, and now, of course, there'll be some put in in front of the cemetery, I just noticed, you know, if you build it, they will come, sort of a thing. And so I see so many people walking and so forth. And so I think that anything we can do, I know that there's a project in mind for the Conant Park, to put a walkway through there, which is accessible so people can actually walk through the park, especially seniors. I also wonder if there's a sidewalk on Gunn Road Extension that goes up in that very busy corner of Route 10 there. Are kids leaving Norris and walking to Cumberland Farms like that way as opposed to the other way? So I just think more sidewalks, more things that actually make, studies show that when you have a walking community, you have a healthier community. So I think that anything we can do to have more pedestrian, that would serve everybody in town. And I think broadband, I think making sure that everybody has access to broadband, I think it's an equity issue. So I think for me, those are big, and I still think we should keep public safety complex on the radar.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's one of those big ones. It's, you know, it's been spinning wheels, spinning wheels, so it's hard to not include it.
Sure.
But it's also one that doesn't seem as, you know, right there as the rest of them might be.
I think, I think it's one that, you know, we had talked about before, just trying to help get the committee back reconstituted and meeting again. And so to perhaps get that message out that we'd like to see the public safety complex get going, and we will do a bit more active support, however we can. We'll keep on searching for grants or any other source of funding, but the challenge has been, you know, how we, how we can fit it someplace on land, preferably that we already own, and make good use of that. I know the early design, I think I'd seen at one point in time, was quite, quite extensive and really the, probably a lot more inclusive of all sorts of bells and whistles compared to what we're hearing about for Williamsburg or West Hampton or some of the others that are currently doing it. So, you know, perhaps an idea would be to, you know, even contact the firm that did that study and say, hey, look, you know, we're still in the same boat. We've still got the same piece of land. We've gotten worse conditions because it's been three or four more years now, and we'd like to keep on moving in this. Could you do maybe another design? I mean, we haven't budgeted for that, so that would be another issue where we would find the money for that. But, you know, maybe it would be worth looking at that idea.
Well, in thinking about not trying to solve this particular issue within this year, but, you know, with multi-year approach.
Sure, yeah.
And once, you know, I thought it was longer than three or four years that this, that study, that design was out, but.
It wasn't more than.
It could be potentially that we have new department heads.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking it probably involves fire, police, ambulance.
Yeah, they were there. Yeah, Ian and John, I believe, were involved in it.
They were part of it, yeah.
Yeah, they were.
All right. You know, maybe they, maybe they have different thoughts now. Maybe we could scale this back or here, or maybe we don't need this anymore.
Well, you know what happened? There's a million-dollar price tag we're excavating. So the land was purchased behind the fire station, but the price tag, it was all the bells and whistles and a million dollars just to actually excavate back there.
Yeah.
So that was a difficult. I think the Public Safety Committee can also reach out to both West Hampton and Williamsburg and learn from them. They're right, they're already moving along. So I think it'd be great to resurrect the group.
Okay. Well, let's, let's assume that we can at least help push the message to get that group resurrected anyway and get started, like the Greenway has started to do as well.
There's also one other thing that, like, I haven't mentioned, and I'm a junior member and more of a younger person on the board, but just making Southampton more accessible for younger families and younger people to move here, that's something, is more of a long-term goal ultimately, but it's something to keep in mind, especially with the Housing Authority and Planning Board and just an open space even, to see where and if there's opportunities for younger families to move in and plan housing around that. I think long-term, and that's really long-term planning, but that's something that I'm going to keep in mind moving forward for the board.
Sure. And I think that's, that's definitely been a desire and both a challenge, because I think we know, we've all known people in town, whether they be people that have been longtime residents that would like to maybe downsize and stay in town, they can't afford to stay in town, which is extremely unfortunate, and/or their, their family members that would be first-time home buyers, for example, that would also like to stay in town and can't afford to stay in town and have to move out. And we've had people that we've lost on certain committees because they now are no longer residents of town.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we know that that's a serious issue, and I'm hoping that with the work that the Housing Commission is starting to do with their housing production plan, and maybe that will involve some changes in zoning bylaws or something through the Planning Board. I mean, all of that kind of ties together, like you said. So with a little luck, we'll make some progress on that. But I think those are ones where I feel like they're kind of starting to move on their own. But I think this, going back to John's idea, I think the idea of sort of the overall financial health is probably an overarching goal. Does everybody agree to that? Shall we, do we want to vote on that, saying that that's our number-one priority, just for the sake of having a vote on that?
Yeah.
John, make a motion, please.
I make, I make the motion that for this year, the. I make, I make the motion that for this year, the, the first priority goal and objective of the Select Board would be the overall financial health and improvement of the town budget process.
And services to, services to residents. Okay, good. Anybody second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Good. Thank you. Okay, so that doesn't mean that we won't still be thinking about, you know, public safety and all of these other comments. The broadband, as I mentioned, we're going to bring it up at the Tech Committee meeting tomorrow to see what level of timing and interest they have to help us out with some further, further work on that as well. And as we get more into the American Rescue Act eligibility, what we can use it for, we may find that we have some resources there that we didn't even know that we could have. So that would be good. With that, what I wanted to talk about next is a quarterly report schedule for department heads and certain committees. This is a schedule that Francine had put together at one point in time and we kind of got off track with it last year, but I would like to revive it. So even though it says FY '22 Select Board Schedule, let's consider this a draft for tonight and if we need another meeting to, to think about this. But what this does is basically for each, at this point in time, I'll let Francine talk about this, but for each point in time, you have put basically some level of committee report from a department head or a couple of department heads and/or a committee. So each meeting would feature that, not, not every other meeting, just not once a month, but every meeting. And you've done it from September through April. And I'm assuming because you're counting May and June as our major...
Budget crunch.
Budget crunch times. Okay. So would you like to talk about that a little bit in terms of some of your thought process or...
I mean, this was, you know, I scheduled or put together presentations by committees and, and department heads because I think hearing from them directly is certainly a better vehicle of communicating with the residents and with, and with one another than just relying solely on the liaison reports. I think quarterly reports by the heads of those departments or committees, you know, would, would serve us best and get a dialogue going. And the way I grouped them is, in my logic, is the ones that I thought may overlap. For instance, when I look at, you know, I look at the accountant, the treasurer, collector and the assessors, all as, you know, having financial responsibilities either mostly, hopefully mostly for revenue than, than expense. But anyway, having them all present at this, on the same evening so that they can also hear from one another. We can hear from them. We have an opportunity of asking questions and getting a sense of where it is we are in the process. Same way, you know, going down the list. And they, you may not agree with, with how I grouped them and I'm fine with that. But I was just trying to find a way in which I thought these committees or departments had more in common and that hopefully that would lead to more coordination and collaboration on a day-to-day basis once everybody understood what everyone else was up to. And that's really how I looked at this, at this chart as a facilitator and a source of information to all of us.
And for the most part, there would be two, two times a year that people would come and give their reports.
Basically, yes.
Pretty much. I mean, allowing the couple-month lag.
Right.
So we could pick it back up in July, August perhaps too.
And in between time, that information would be updated by the liaison who would participate in their meetings. So it wouldn't be like we hear from them twice a year and, and that's it. I mean, we could get some measure of progress throughout the year just by, you know, us joining their meetings and reporting back to one another.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have any thoughts about those that are listed here? Just for, just for the public's sake, there's a grouping of accountant, treasurer, collector, assessors, which would essentially be our finance team, if you will. Another grouping of the Finance Committee, Capital Improvement and Personnel Policies and Procedures.
That one may not fit. That may fit somewhere else because I'm looking at your Grant Committee, perhaps, as being... That didn't exist when...
Correct. Okay.
When I originally did this.
Yep. Another one, Community Preservation, Conservation, Open Space and Park Commission. That definitely all seems to, to float together, I would say. Then Planning, Zoning, Housing, again. And Master Plan, okay, so there Francine, you've got Master Plan listed there. Yeah, possibly, but we do need to probably fit in Grant Committee at some point.
Right.
But, yes. Okay. Then another grouping of Water, Health, Transfer Station. Another one of Highway, Police, Fire, Ambulance.
They might include Emergency Management with that.
Emergency Management, EMD.
Well, I'm, let me make two comments.
Yeah.
One is you've got Water, Health, Transfer Station. I might suggest moving Transfer Station into the grouping with Highway, Police and Fire and Ambulance because Highway Superintendent also does a Transfer Station. And then the other piece of that is now the Emergency Management Director is the Fire and Ambulance Director. So you might move Emergency Management into that.
Okay. Okay. So then that would be like Water and Health as the, the two together.
Yeah.
Right? And then moving Transfer Station, Highway as a kind of a pair, if you will.
Yeah.
Same supervisor, Police, and then Fire, Ambulance, EMD as a group. So that would be a...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Norris, Hampshire Regional and the Superintendent Business Manager. Then Library, Council on Aging. So it would take the Emergency Management out of here. And you had Tree Warden.
Some of these were there just simply because we needed to find a slot.
Makes sense for them more to be with agricultural.
You could take it out or move it.
Yeah, I don't know how much, but well, let's go through the next bunch and then the last, last couple, I think that are not repeated yet. So that was Library, Council on Aging, Tree Warden. The next one, Historical, Greenway, Agricultural. And then the last one that's not a repeat, Bylaws, Elections Registrar, Cemetery and Veterans. So, yeah, John, thought?
I, I like all, all the other suggestions that have already been made about consolidation. And I love the fact that we're going to have the accountant for the September meeting. The, I'm wondering if for, when the accountant, treasurer, collector and assessor meets, those are the, the employees within the town, within our financial division. But the, the missing piece is the Finance Committee. So I wonder if for, when they're in here, if that should be a joint session with the Finance.
So move Finance up to that.
Add Finance to them.
So that the whole financial team is together twice a year.
Sure, that could be a good idea.
That would be good.
And that could potentially take the place of the Finance Meeting that month.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay.
And I would probably think to put the veterans along with, you know, the Water Health or Library Council and Council on Aging.
Yeah, one that strikes me maybe is missing is the Building Commissioner. Do we want to...
He should be with Public Safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With Fire, Police, Ambulance.
Okay.
I was thinking with Planning, Zoning.
Yeah, Planning, you could also go Planning, Zoning.
Maybe one with each.
Yeah. What do you think Ed? Planning, Zoning, Housing.
We could, Planning, Zoning, Housing and Building Commissioner?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Maybe. I...
And move Master Plan or...
Yeah, Master Plan. Well, see, there's the challenge. I'm not sure that Master Plan is going to... I mean, to the extent that we're folding the priorities from the Master Plan survey into what we're doing, I don't know that we'll have a separate need to report out from Master Plan itself. If we do, it would be like once a year, not twice, I would say.
Except for those twice, I liked how they got paired because they aren't in the same pairing twice. And it made sense to me that, okay, Master Plan, if they're overseeing it, okay, one of their quarterly reports is with Planning, Zoning and Housing, and the other one's with Community Preservation.
Oh, yeah.
Conservation and Open Space.
Right, yeah, you're right. Okay, that's true. That does make some sense. Okay, that's fine. So how about the, the Library Council on Aging and we have the Tree Warden in there? Should we put somebody else in there? Library Council on Aging.
I thought Veterans is a service. A library, council on aging and the Veterans Agent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Veterans, okay.
And the emergency manager.
Okay. Then Historical, Greenway and Agricultural kind of makes as much sense as anything. Yep, Bylaws, Elections Registrar, Cemetery. Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Don't know if there's a better...
Cemetery be meeting with Historical? Or, you know, it also says, yeah. And the Veterans?
Possibly. I mean Cemetery, we could have a fourth one in Historical, Greenway and Agricultural. Cemetery could maybe join that one.
Yeah.
That would leave Bylaws and Elections Registrar. That would probably fit better.
Yes.
Who are you going to put Cemetery?
With the Historical, Greenway, Ag, just pop it up one.
Cemetery, yeah.
Okay. Community Preservation, Conservation, Open Space, all together again. Yep, okay. So what we don't have would be, for example, the...
Bless you.
Bless you. The Grant Committee, if we think we need to have that. If, what I was thinking on that, we had set ourselves a, just a, basically, I think it was a one-year charge until November. So I think I would like to maybe suggest that we put it in somewhere. Maybe we could, I don't know, early December or something, we could just put it in there. We need to decide if we're going to continue it, I guess, beyond November is my point. So probably the Grant Committee needs to come in at some point. I just don't know where it fits best.
I don't know about fitting, but there's room in the, when Water and Health are here.
That's what I was looking at, as we move Transfer Station.
Right, okay.
Right.
Okay, Water Health, yep, okay. Okay. So, so that, is there anybody that we're missing, any other entity that we think we need to have?
Ad-hoc Tech.
Oh, my goodness.
IT, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
The IT.
Let me crawl under the table right now. I'm doing a bad job representing my committee here. Wow.
I'm on that committee too, so...
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you. Town Clerk?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Took everything in there.
With Bylaws, Elections Registrar.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, yeah. So we can put Town Clerk slash Elections.
That's good.
Yep, that's fine.
That works.
Yeah, Ad-hoc Tech Committee. Yeah, let's see here, hold on.
Would we put that with Capital Improvement or...
That's a good suggestion. Because we moved Finance away from there, right?
Yeah, that's true. So Capital Improvement, Finance, we moved elsewhere.
Yeah.
So Capital Improvement, PQB and Ad-hoc Tech, how's that?
Yeah.
And did you, did you put the Grants somewhere?
Grants, we went down to Water Health and Grant Committee. They don't, it doesn't really flow terribly well there, but it's okay. It's an open space. So let me recap what I think we've just regrouped. And then we'll figure out if, if this timing is right. So first grouping, Account, Finance Committee, Accountant, Treasurer, Collector and Assessors. Second grouping, Capital Improvement, PQB and Ad-hoc Tech. Third, Community Preservation, Conservation, Open Space and Park Commission. Fourth, Planning, Zoning, Housing and Building.
Yeah.
And Master Plan? That's a lot. But, but, but...
Yeah, actually, what I did was I inserted the Building Commissioner just once.
Yeah.
Down on February meeting to Planning, Zoning, Housing and Building Commissioner.
Oh, down on that one?
Because that, that one, the Master Plan implementation had moved to another one.
Sure, okay, now that would work. Okay. So we'll do Building just one time down in the February slot? That, that would work. And then, so we'll keep the Master Plan. So Planning, Zoning, Housing, Master Plan in October at this point. Let me not lie here. Next one would be Water Health and Grant Committee. Second November would be Highway Police, sorry, Highway Transfer Station, Police, Fire, Ambulance, EMD. combo. December meeting would be both Schools and the Superintendent slash Business Manager. December grouping could be Library, Council on Aging, Veterans and Tree Warden? Yeah?
If we need to hear from, I mean, we may not need to hear from the Tree Warden.
I mean... Ed, thoughts on that? I don't know. Tree Warden?
Yeah, I think that's fine there.
Yeah, okay. And then Historical, Greenway, Agricultural and Cemetery.
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 The next would be Bylaws, Town Clerk, Elections Registrar. And then we're back to Community Preservation, Conservation, Open Space with Master Plan on that overview. And then February, Planning, Zoning, Housing and Building. And then we'd, we'd just, just repeat what we did below. So we'd go down through that April one and suggestion about leaving May and, and June kind of open for final budget town meeting issues without having these kinds of presentations, but maybe picking it back up in July and August. We don't have any for July and August, right?
No.
So, yeah.
Sorry, no, I just, the, the Elections slash Register, isn't that the same post? I mean, shouldn't one of those words be the Town Clerk?
Yeah, we've added, yeah, we added Town Clerk. So, so Bylaws, Town Clerk, Elections Registrar, so...
That's the same, that's the same person, right?
Yes, it's all the same.
But the Board of Registars, right, or? Okay. So it all goes together like, like Fire and EMD would go together? Yeah, okay.
There is a chair though of the Registars, are they not?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they could come.
Who's that?
She can speak too.
Yeah, okay. So any, yeah, any thoughts about that? Does this make sense to people?
I think it makes a lot of sense, but last time there were times when people didn't come and so we would just ask you then to reach out to everybody early on and...
Yeah, I just send them the whole list.
Okay. Yeah, so then we get the, the list tidied up so we know what we're doing here. So...
Just, just on that point though, the Select Board does have the authority to require department heads to appear before itself.
I would assume we do.
Solely. Maybe just a gentle reminder in the email wording.
Well, and I think too...
Set this aside, block it out.
Well, and one of the things that I wanted to do with this idea is to have this laid out and it's out there for the year. Everybody knows it well ahead of time. We'll put it up on the website. We'll distribute it to the departments and committees. Nobody can say they didn't know about it and they need an excuse for why they're not coming because...
And I would post it on the website in case residents are continually interested in one category.
They wanted to listen in, exactly. Now, we want to, we want to make this visible. We want to make it so that people are accountable to themselves, to us and to the residents. And so, yeah, that's why I wanted to try and get a year sort of a plan out there and just say, let's, let's stick to it. So my first question though would be, just with the September first meeting, what we have laid out there as the Finance Accountant, Treasurer, Collector, Assessors, does that, John, would that meet what you were alluding to about a separate Select Board Finance Meeting?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of this. So I, I think that would definitely, it's a dedicated, assuming that we're not going to try here from all four of them in a 15-minute window.
Right.
It's going to be a good chunk of the meeting, like maybe...
I mean, we would have to not have too much other stuff on the agenda for that day, I mean, I think.
So...
Or we could have a separate meeting in between meetings if we needed to.
Yeah, and the other thing, so I'll just mention this now, not, not for any action, but my other thought was, are there things on, that come up before us on a regular basis? Like, for example, all the warrants, right? That's really a notification because they've already been signed and gone.
Right.
And the expense reports, you know, so... Long, long game plan. You know, we meet on the, on the first and the third or the second and the fourth?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
Just on a rolling basis, so...
So some weeks, yeah.
So I would, so like one thing I would propose, a goal for our new accountant that comes on board, knowing it's not going to happen right away, is that the second Select Board meeting of the month, we should get the full reports of the previous month. Because you're at least three weeks into the new month. The old month should be closed out. So then, so it's not every two weeks that we have to review. No, we may want to because of the condition of the books. I mean, not the books, but where we are with expenses and all that. But once it gets rolling, you know, and then we wouldn't schedule a heavy meeting when we're going over the expense reports, right? That would hap...
Right.
So we're only dealing with that issue instead of... So we're only dealing with that issue instead of every two weeks, once a month. The, our objective is, the previous month is closed.
Right. Okay.
You know, as an example, and then maybe put all the warrants on a, on a different one, because it's just a procedural thing to lighten up the load a little.
It is, it is repeating that out. Yep. Okay, it's an idea. I think with the, with the one that's what's been slated here right now for the first meeting in September, which we'll have to decide soon because we've got a holiday coming up in there too, that's going to maybe throw us off schedule. But with the finance committee, accountant, treasurer, collector, and assessors. We obviously have our treasurer collector, but we may or may not have an accountant and an assessor by that point in time. But we would still want to try and have a meeting along these, these lines for the first of September, I would think. Yeah? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if everybody's in general agreement with this, we'll, we'll tidy it up. Do we need to have a formal vote to adopt this idea, or are we generally okay? I don't know.
I don't know if we need to vote.
What's procedurally okay? I don't know. Do we need to vote on adopting the schedule that we just talked about? Ed?
I would.
Okay. All right. Then I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the schedule as amended and as, as will be rewritten, to be distributed to the department heads and various committees.
So moved.
All right.
One second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good. Thanks, guys. I think that will get us a bit farther down the line here. And we would like people to stick to that. And if some, if for some reason, with all this advance notice, somebody cannot do it, they're responsible for finding another committee to substitute for them. We're not going to have a blank space. Okay? My rule. I'm being autocratic right now on that one, but I, I think that's, I think that's important. That's where we.
But they still have to keep to the schedule if it's once a year or twice a.
Right.
It's their commitment to us.
Right. And if, for some reason, there's some extraneous reason that they can't possibly do it, we're not going to just not have anything. We're going to have somebody else be substituted.
But at, at, for where it's department heads and where they have an individual that can act in their stay. It would be their, they could opt to send their assist, i.e. the treasurer, who has an assistant treasurer that could act in there, could send that person.
I guess, sure. Sure, as long as the.
Somebody's got to be.
Somebody was representing the entity. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's fine. Okay. Good. Thanks. All right. Moving on. COVID-19 update. Do we have any, any news on what's happening around town? I know we haven't, I don't think we've resumed any call, the biweekly call or anything halfway with the board of health and.
We've been, we've been quiet here. I mean, statewide and nationally, the numbers are starting to creep up again, mainly due to the Delta variant. So, you know, whether we're going to see any changes come from the state, you know, requiring masks on an inside.
I was wondering if.
Basis or not, I'm, I'm not sure at this point in time.
I didn't know, I haven't seen anything, I don't think, come out of the governor's office on this, I don't know if anybody.
No, he is not.
So I, I think that's something that we need to keep an eye on, though. I, I think with everything circulating around us, I mean, if we've been lucky so far, that's great, but I don't think we want to take our eye off the ball on this one.
No. And, and it'll be interesting. I mean, most of the areas that have been hit, actually, they say that 40% of the new cases are due to Florida, Texas, and I think it's Missouri. And then, you know, after that, obviously, you know, there've been some clusters and some higher numbers in, shall we say, you know, vacation areas or whatever that have been popular, so. But it will be interesting to see what happens, I'd say, on a local level, you know, in September, when, you know, colleges are back in session, schools are back in session, you know, what have you, to see, you know, what the effect is, but.
And I know the Norris is having a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, are they not?
We have our, yeah, so Norris changed its standing schedule to the second Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
It's on the agenda, but on August 10th, the day before, the, one or two committee members have been invited to a meeting with the board of health.
Okay.
At 5:30.
Great.
So, which I, I'll plan to attend and get another committee member to go, to specifically discuss what we know as of that point.
Great.
So that we're prepared for our discussion about reopening the school.
What day again? August 50th?
August 10th. It's Tuesday. It's the day before.
August 10th. Okay. Great. Now, that's a good.
That's the day we have a select board.
Six, right? So I'll go to that for the first half hour.
Okay.
And then the other school committee member can fill me in.
Okay. Great. Now, that's a good idea, huh? I'm glad they're doing that. That's, sounds like a plan. Okay? Great. Okay. CARES Act update.
And basically, sometime in the next, you know, 10 days or so, you and I should sit down, go over the list and see what we've got and for monies to reallocate and see.
The last time that I had looked at it, we were still probably a couple hundred thousand that I thought we had available still to re-shift.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised.
So it's around that, I think. I think you had mentioned that you were going to have a department meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
Is that right? So what we could do would be to also just, without knowing exactly what we have to shift, we could just find out if anybody has additional ideas, needs, that might fit the COVID guidelines, and take advantage of that department meeting to raise up some possible ideas. Then I think we'd probably, I mean, given our experience so far, we'd probably have to still check in with your liaison at the state to see, is this really eligible this time around?
Right. And it's, and it's actually a smaller pool, because it doesn't make any sense to actually request anything that's going to be covered by FEMA reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've got a, so you and I, let's, let's make a plan, depending on how these interviews get scheduled.
Yeah.
Because I, I really do think, I mean, CARES is priority too, but honestly, for me, the, the accountant, assistant accountant interview stuff is, is really a higher priority, but, you know, we can, we can block off a couple hours and see if we can just close the door and make it happen. The CARES update.
Sounds good.
All right. American Rescue Act update. Various things from DLS, bits and pieces of guidance, but not.
Bits and pieces. I mean, the, the biggest things that fall out that are use, seem to be useful to our town are the infrastructure, whether it be, you know, water, sewer, or broadband. It does seem, you know, possible for, to utilize it for broadband expansion into areas of town that don't currently have it. However, that also means that, you know, one of the recurring themes, and I won't just say it's tier and charter spectrum, because I can't stand Comcast Xfinity where I live either. I look and see the same things. It's, you know, every couple of months or whatever, they're dropping channels or whatever, and they're, you know, increasing the cost of them. So, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, just keep in mind that it so keeps us with charter spectrum, but it would be a good way to get into areas of town that don't currently
And who, who.
Offered to it.
Who best knows what those areas of town are that are not really, I mean, I think Ian has mentioned a few.
Well, I think we bring in our charter rep.
Yeah, charter. When I call to complain about the service, they, they have a whole map.
Okay.
They have a whole map.
Absolutely.
Well, that would be maybe something that we should think about on, as an agenda item going forward too.
Or have the technology committee meet with them.
Yeah. And then the, the other one is, you know, the water department has said that they're, you know, obviously, they could very well utilize some of those ARPA funds to help fund, you know, some of their ongoing planned replacement, water main projects and, and some other things.
Yep.
And then, like I said, we do know that we can utilize the ARPA funds for any required trainings that our police department have to do from the Police Reform Act at this point in time.
Okay. Good.
Chris?
Yeah.
I just had a thought. I wonder if, I wonder if it makes sense to add one more week to our board, our schedule? And then that week, and have it at the end of the year, so on May, have the charter representative come in and the Eversource representative come in, just kind of have a standing spot once a year for the, for them to come in.
For May, you were suggesting?
And H G and E too.
Might as well throw in the H G and E too, yeah.
Yeah.
H G and E.
H G and E.
Those wouldn't be as lengthy.
Yeah.
You know, and again, it's another, at least once a year, we've got them in front of us. Citizens can send their requests and comments ahead of time.
Good idea. So H G E, Eversource, and charter.
And East Hampton Media.
The media.
Uh, East Hampton Media.
Kind of like the contractors.
Yeah. Okay. Well, and the services to town, as we're talking about that. So I, I think it's a good idea. Yeah. Let's, let's add that. So on our department schedule, add the month of May, with that on there. Okay? Good idea. All right.
And, and as far as, you know, sewer infrastructure goes, even if we're going to get the 1.2 million, and I wanted to put all 1.2 million towards that project, it still means we're going to have to find funding sources on, on our own, so that one may not make a lot of sense at this point in time.
Well, and even when we were looking at a couple of things with that new program from the state, I believe Randall had reached out to the DPW head in Westfield to see where they were at this point in time, because at one point in time, they had excess capacity. I mean, this is a few years ago now.
Yeah.
We've had tons and tons of studies of water sewer expansion, Hampden Ponds area especially. Lots of money spent on studies and nothing really coming of it. But at the time, Westfield had extra capacity that could have maybe helped link in with the south side of town, but I believe he said that they were pretty, pretty full now, and they don't really have that capacity now to take any of our connections into their sewer system, I don't think. But something that we could certainly bring up with the, the water folks when we meet with them.
And who will be spearheading this decision around how this, these funds get spent? Like, what's the plan? Is there a committee that's going to be looking at it like the CARES Act? I mean, do we decide on how that is going to be?
The American Rescue Plan? Money?
Personally, I think it should be the select board.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could do something similar to kind of reach out to the various departments and get some ideas, you know, once we get a better idea of what really is eligible. But I, you know, if we can get any more specificity.
Well, I mean, a lot of what they're pushing again is what, you know, we were able to utilize under COVID, you know, housing through rental assistance or, you know, mortgage assistance.
Business assistance.
Business assistance. There seems to be a lot of categories like that, rather than a lot of categories that are a direct influx to, shall we say, operating budget, you know, for the town.
Yeah. That's true. Yeah. So, but, yeah. I think that would be, an idea would be to reach out through department head meetings and find out what people are thinking about, especially water sewer, other, other topics as well, and then bring it back to select board and, and have us kind of say yea or nay on certain topics.
But in the case of like broadband, it would be reaching out to charter and having them come and provide us with a map, and what would it mean? What would it cost? All of that. So it wouldn't specifically be a department head, but it would be.
Well, and we might, because that would be a special thing, we might even have a separate meeting with charter to come in much earlier.
Yeah.
Because I mean, May's a whole year away now, you know, to have them come in earlier, you know, after we talk to the, the tech committee and see. I know they've reached out to them, but mostly, mostly just to boost up our tier level, is it not, for the, for town hall? I mean, it's just to, to get us to another tier of, of better service for broadband, but not broader townwide service.
No, it's for town hall and did some, shall we say, research into like a, I won't even say a wide area network, but fiber connections utilized between like here and Norris School.
Is there fiber here now, other than the?
There is fiber here now. Correct.
And you're, and you're still having issues with charter?
Well, we don't utilize the fiber.
Gotcha.
Well, as far as the American Rescue Act, though, the money's in the bank.
Yeah.
Or at least half the money's in the bank.
We've got the money. We actually have half of the money here, or half of the first tranche here.
Well, it depends on how you look at that, shall we say, whole package, because I look at it and say, well, if we're supposed to get 1.8, even though it's over two years, it's less than a quarter of what we're supposed to.
What I meant to say is it's not like CARES Act, we, you know.
Yeah.
You basically, we've already received, you know, 300 and something thousand.
322 and some change, correct.
Exactly. Yeah. And we have a longer time to spend this too. I mean, this is really a, a four-year schedule.
Four.
Right. So it's totally different than CARES. Not, I mean, but that doesn't mean that we should lag in terms of getting a plan together and making our, our decisions on that, so. Good. Anything else on those things? If not, we'll keep on moving here. Good. All right. Next one down is a request from the tech committee to modify their charge. If you recall, Dan LaValle came and presented to us, gosh, about a year ago, I guess, about how they were going to organize the tech committee. One of the things that he had suggested was that he would be willing to start it off and get it rolling, but he didn't want to continue to be the chair after a certain point. And so he's asked me to report that he has followed that plan and he has stepped down as chair. He's still on the committee, but Mike Jaeger is now the chair of the ad hoc tech committee. And he's the person also that got recently appointed to the East Hampton Media Board. Okay? So Mike is taking over the reins from Dan, so Dan is a regular member. But one of the things that they were wanting to do was to have a minor tweak in their, their language of their charge where they would like to have the ability to have perhaps one or two non-residents on the committee that have got tech specifications. And especially, I think, if we think about them getting more involved in some of the broadband stuff, that might not be a bad idea. But what they have as a charge now, I'm going to read two, two pieces of it. The summary was a committee consisting of Southampton resident volunteers who have worked in or currently work in the information technology field. So that really limits it to Southampton residents. And then at the very end, the committee structure, it said five to seven residents with technology experience. So what they're asking us to do would be to modify their charge and just broaden that a little bit, give them a little bit more flexibility so that when they have a person or two that has got the experience that they would really need and want on their committee, but they may not be a town resident, they'd be in a, you know, somewhere else, but willing to come and be part of the committee if we would allow them to, to do that. And so a suggestion would be that we could say on the summary, a committee consisting primarily of Southampton resident volunteers as an idea. And then under the committee structure, say five to seven persons rather than residents, two of whom may be non-resident or something like that. That was a suggestion coming forth, but willing to take any other ideas on that. Does that just make?
It makes sense to me.
Any sense to people?
And doesn't the Conservation Commission have this exception also?
They do have people, right? They do have people that are not resident in town. Yeah. And I think we, you know, yeah, I don't think we thought it through very carefully, maybe. I mean, you know, normally you'd go for, for residents, but I mean, you may find if you've got a real technical, oh, I see, a real technical need that you may have somebody that may not be from town that could complement the, the existing committee.
Yeah, some of our, on the Conservation Commission, some of the most experienced members were out of town and they were excellent additions.
Right, yeah. So any, any thoughts about any different kind of wording? Would that, would that help us? I don't know what, what makes any sense to anybody.
How about this?
Yeah.
The summary, a committee consisting of volunteers who have worked in or currently work in the information technology field, five of which shall be residents of the town, two may, may not be residents of the town.
Okay. Two may be non-residents. Okay.
I would just leave it at five of which are town residents, then the other one is just the natural result. The other two of the seven would not be if we're only stipulating five. That's all. Saving some words.
Well, right, is there, is there a section in here?
We just have to change it on the committee structure.
On the committee structure.
On the committee structure at the end that says five to seven residents, so that would have to change there?
Yeah.
So it'd be five to seven persons, two of whom may be non-residents. Okay. That sounds like a viable possibility. Does that meet everybody's agreement?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Could I have a, a motion to approve a modified charge for the ad hoc tech committee then? Along those lines?
Certainly.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. I will take that to them tomorrow night. All right. Next along the line is the revenue and expenditure update. And Ed, remind me, you said that this was, this, this included the last warrant, but it does not include all the, the transfers, the end-of-year transfers we did. Is that right?
Correct.
So this is a little bit different in terms of the totals that we had from the last meeting, I believe, in terms of the general fund totals and what we had left out, left over. General fund balance right now looks to be $650,641.54. And that's pretty much, that would still most likely be it, right? Except you're going to modify the internal.
Right. Then we'll, then we'll have some encumbrances.
Yeah.
That didn't make these.
Okay. So does anybody have some thoughts and questions that they would like to ask about the expense report that is basically through June, covers all the warrants through June 30th? But knowing that we have the end-of-year transfers that have not all been captured in here yet.
I had a general question.
Yep.
In regards to the selectmen expenses, the minutes. When was that something that we decided to start? My understanding is we pay someone to take the minutes. Is that something that we've always done? Is that something that we can look into areas of not having to do, whether it's by volunteer or a member of the Select Board? Because from what I'm looking at, the expense is the Select Board's the only board that pays someone to take their minutes.
The school committee does too.
Oh, the school committee does too?
School committee does, yeah. Personally, I will not volunteer to do minutes. I volunteer a lot. So anyway, what happens is Kathy Ingram is the person, in addition to Ed's administrative assistant, that watches the videos. She used to come here and I think she does it now by watching it and does the minutes.
So does a town, so does your assistant do, do the minutes?
No, I think Kathy Ingram is doing it.
Kathy came back to do it. She was doing, Judy was doing it for a while to get us caught up, but Kathy's back to doing it. Kathy does the school too, actually, same person, right?
Is it, we have a new person now?
You do, okay.
It's going to be, it's going to be a staff member from central office.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good.
Still paid though, right?
Yeah.
For that position, it's going to be part of their salary.
Okay. So I think we, we had, this has been, I mean, the, the notes, as you'll see here, have been pretty extensive.
We've been through all the times.
We had tried it, I think, where Ed was trying to take notes at the same time and that really became more of a burden than it was worth, I think, and decided to go back to what had been done in previous, previous years. As far as I know, was somebody actually taking more detailed notes. So I don't know.
I guess my question is, is there anyone in the Town Hall that would be able to, we could include that as one of, one of their duties?
Well.
Like if you're an assistant or an assistant or an admin.
But then our charge would be that we would have to allow them extra.
Time.
Extra time.
Over time.
And compensation for coming to.
Okay.
Select Board meetings. It could be two hours or five hours or whatever. I mean, I don't know.
Exactly.
I think it's easier in many ways to have one dedicated person to.
True.
Keep on doing it. I mean, you've got, the person's familiar with the, the topics and, I don't know. I think it's easier just to have one person rather than, you know, swap out people, but yeah. Jen?
Hi, Jennifer Day, treasurer collector, so.
I mean, you're volunteering.
Oh, no, no. I had to do minutes once when I worked in East Hampton and I really didn't like it. But so when I did work for other towns, cities, usually the administrative assistant to the mayor or the town administrator did come to the meetings and take the minutes. I don't know if it'd be, I mean, it's still a cost. I don't know if it'd be more cost efficient to add on to those hours. I don't know if that person's willing to work in the evenings, but it's just a thought.
Yeah. I think no matter what, we'd have to, to pay that person, no matter, no matter what we do.
Volunteer.
Well, we have the option of people being able to watch the video. They don't necessarily always have to come at night.
Yeah. Zoom out.
It could be in some way part of their workday, maybe not totally, but partially. I don't know.
Do they have to be, since they are televised, would it be, have to be something that they have to come out of work hours like Francine was saying? Watch them the next week and do the minutes.
Ed could speak to that better, but I would assume you could watch that from home or from, at some point in time, or watch it during work hours. And so that means with somebody who's working, I mean, how much does Judy work a week? Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours. So to the extent that she's watching and writing notes for one of her days of the week, assuming she's working four hours.
She does them now, right?
So.
No, Kathy Ingram's doing them now.
Yeah. Judy had helped and Judy had been helping until we got some caught up, but Kathy's been doing it now. So I mean, I think it takes away then from, from other things that Ed needs her to do. So it's a trade-off.
I was just.
So, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I think we have, I mean, if, if you're, part of your issue is just questioning the cost on that, is that what your issue was or?
I, I mean, I am, just because I didn't, I didn't realize the, I looked over the budget pretty quickly, but I didn't realize that Norris had also was paying someone to take the minutes. And I wasn't, I also in my role of newly role of clerk, I also wasn't sure. Exactly, like if I should, if that's a role that I could take on.
I see.
Well, you, you get to do that during executive sessions.
Executive session.
Executive session is something that.
You definitely could take on that role if you wanted to at that point in time. But I think at this point in time with, with, with the system that we have, we're, we're probably doing okay. Kathy's been really quick at turning things around. We're, we're really pretty much caught up with a lot of our minutes.
What was the reason for the backlog, can I ask?
Oh, we didn't have any, Ed was trying to do it by himself. We didn't have anybody. Kathy used to come to the meetings and then when we went COVID, we went Zoom.
Zoom.
And nobody was here. And so, yeah, we were just trying to figure out a system that worked, basically, so. Okay. Anybody have any questions on the expense report that's?
I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Francine.
Just a question. In, in departments where they're over, overspent in some categories, when we do the transfer, the, the transfer will come from within their own department between the lines?
Not necessarily. It's the first place we look, but it does not necessarily happen like that.
We've already, we've done what, four end-of-year transfers?
We've done all of them.
We've done all the end-of-year transfers.
We're past the date, so.
So some, I think the beginning ones, if I'm not mistaken, the beginning ones, I recall, pretty much came from within that same department to the extent they could. And then as we got to the last one, which was a fairly large transfer, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
That was like 80 or 90,000 dollars. I think some of those came from.
Other departments.
Kind of odd lines to, yes, other departments.
Wherever we can take it from.
Wherever, yeah, wherever it was possible.
Okay. So the one, one category, I'm looking at the health director's salary is over $535 overspent. Is there any way that that money could be recovered from COVID?
No. And I think we transferred it out of the Sharps money within that line item.
Yes, that's correct.
Within that department.
How do you get over there?
I mean, I understand that, you know, it's, you know, COVID has been the great, it's the worst offender because anything that's gone wrong in the past 14 months, it's COVID's fault. But, you know, this is like the, the perfect story because it's illegal to overspend a line item.
Yes, it is.
But we have unique, unusual circumstances that are happening here. And I know that everybody that is currently here is working above and beyond 120% to get it done. And I'll just ask the question again, and I know there's no answer tonight, but it's, when will June 30th numbers all be done and everything be booked? And, you know, I don't think we have.
Well, at least, at least for the transfers and stuff, it should be for the next meeting.
Right. But even, even the revenue, I mean, right, because if, and I might be wrong, but my thought is that the, at least for my time, filling in as a town treasurer in Chester and Washington, you know, the treasurer puts in their, their revenue return over packets and all that and sends them off and then they have to be reconciled.
Right.
You know, and so that piece isn't happening. And I get it, limited resources, limited time, but we're now going on, you know, this is the third meeting where the revenue's not being brought forward, so. And this is part of the bigger plan. This is getting the interviews done, figuring out what we need to do. And then I think, I'll just throw it out there, is being prepared to figure out where there's additional resources because in essence, we have two years' worth of work that needs to be done.
Yeah.
To get everything done. And it's honestly not fair to, if somebody accepts the position to say, okay, thanks for coming on board, we'd like you to do two years' worth of work now in one year.
Yeah. I hear you.
And again, I want to reiterate, everybody that's doing the work now is working at 120% or greater. That, that's not my argument. It's, it's just.
How do we catch up?
Hi. So I did print a revenue report that does go through mid-May, I think, so that's what was posted by the accountant so far.
Okay.
I think the last one you received was through.
April 30th.
April 30th. So this one does show, you know, a better perception on taxes collected because there was that May 3 due date. So it does show like personal property is 99.06% received, real estate 94.85% received. And even after this, there will be, you know, more posted because I have posted so pretty much all of June for departmental receipts. I just have to post the local aid for June and some like ambulance receipts. And then I'm done, so it's just now a matter of Regina getting to post all of that.
Okay. So in, in general, though, we've got, we should be counting, if I'm understanding, we should be counting on probably a month lag time though, between the revenue report and the expenditure report. I mean, once you, once you're booking things, you're waiting to still reconcile with your, your bank accounts and whatever else, right?
Yeah. So the expense report is like instant as soon as the warrant is done.
Right.
Right.
The revenue report though, yeah, it's, there is a lag time on it. And I think that as far as receipts are posted, it's in a good place.
But just for, just for clarification.
For like my, like clarification.
Well, just for clarification, in a perfect scenario, you're doing at least weekly turnovers to the town accountant. I mean, you don't, you don't sit on your turnovers for a month, right?
So that's not.
In a perfect world.
Well, I guess it's not a perfect world. It's never how we did it. It's not how, I mean, it's never how it's been done here. That is something I could do. I mean, I'm not against that, doing a packet weekly and turning it over. That's fine, that's, you know, but typically I do four packets a month, so.
How's that different than once a week?
Because it's, because it's two, it's basically for two weeks and then, so I do two weeks of departmental receipts and then another two weeks plus like the local aid, ambulance receipts, if there's any Unibank school payments. And then I do a payroll packet and an interest packet.
Okay.
So those are done at the end of the month.
But they're spread out over the month. So i.e. you're not waiting until you have closed the month to take all your work from the month and send it to the accountant? Some pieces are going in over time.
Yeah, I mean, I, no, yeah, I don't wait, but I don't do it every week. I mean, I can do it every week. That's okay.
Well, it's something as we, as we talk about.
Yeah.
You know, ways to, to think about, you know, being efficient and getting us information that we need to make some decisions. That might be some thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, if we can entertain.
Yeah. And like some of it too, you know, it comes in, if it comes in on bank statements, those don't necessarily come in at the end of the month, so that, that's going into the next month now. So it's not always like right, you can't always post right during that month that, that revenue is received, you know, but for the most part, so.
Okay.
So I think that maybe even by the next Select Board meeting, all of June could possibly be posted if Regina, you know, has time to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
Yeah.
Thanks, that's helpful. Okay. Could anybody have any other questions? I had one somewhere, I'm trying to find where it was. And I think it was when Rini spurred my memory on sidewalks. Under the gift funds, Ed, there's sidewalks townwide for $35,000 with nothing spent on that. What was that all about? Is that a?
That, that is funds when someone comes before the planning board and say they're doing a cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
And rather than putting sidewalks down both sides.
Both sides of the sub.
In the cul-de-sac, they have the option to put them down, one and the cul-de-sac.
Got it.
Saltacac and, but they have to pay into this fund what the cost.
What do they pay 15,000? What do they put in, in lieu, in lieu?
In lieu of doing the other side, correct.
So how much do they put in?
It depends on the project and what the length is, so it differs. It's not a set fee.
It's not a flat fee. So it's by the foot or the?
I would say it's probably by foot.
So it's not a flat fee, in other words, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then how can the money be used for other purposes?
Yeah.
How can it be used for other sidewalks?
Other sidewalks only.
In other parts of town.
That's what I was going to get at.
Exactly.
That's what I was wondering, okay. And then secondly, does the CARES Act money get entered in as our, as part of our revenue report somewhere or is that?
It does.
Totally, it is, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So that's something that we'll see somewhere. I mean, with all these, all these grants coming.
It is.
I want to be sure we keep all the grant money coming.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay, good. All right. Anybody else have any other questions on that? If not, we'll move on. All right. So tying into this, we started talking about it a little bit, but this notion of collaborations and cost efficiencies.
Right.
It's, was on the, was on the agenda, trying to think about that. I don't know whether we need to belabor that more or just say that this is going to be something that we pick up as a, as a committee discussion as we go forward in the next month and toss out ideas.
Yes.
Kind of brainstorm some ideas as a group and see what's, what's possible?
Yeah.
Or we have a subcommittee of the Select Board to work on that? Or what's anybody's thought about that?
I don't want to, I don't want to keep putting it off till we, you know, design the perfect thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, my, my thought was to have an ad hoc committee, very similar to the IT and the grant, if we can identify people in town who have the particular expertise that they could bring and be willing to put forward. It would be great to have somebody from town with some municipal experience who can give us some insights into how we might orchestrate some of this.
Yeah. So outside, outside the Select Board, I mean, including anybody you want to, but? to, but...
Including, I'm not saying excluding select board, but including people who have that particular expertise. And we may want to look at, you know, maybe we want to look at certain departments. So people, you know, not just efficiency experts, but people who are in that field could come in and make some recommendations to us. That might be one way to go.
I like that idea. And then if we create a charge similar to the IT, then I think we share, okay, this is what we're going to study, this is what we're going to look at.
Yep.
The compensation, or competencies that make up of that body. And then we send that out to all the department heads, you know, because they may have some great ideas that they want to bring forward versus waiting for us to come across. They may not, but it's expanding on the communication and the two-way street, you know.
Okay. Well, how about, without going into greater detail tonight, how about we keep this on the agenda for the next meeting and talk about maybe developing a charge of some sort? Ed, would you like to take the lead on developing a charge that we could consider?
Sure. I could take a stab at it.
And then we can talk about that. Because I think, you know, a couple of things that you had talked about at 1.2, I think related to, you know, improve software and things like that that might make jobs easier in-town hall as well, too. So whatever, whatever ties in there. Okay?
Yeah. The one thing I can tell you is we have old version of financial software. It is, shall we say, hands-on redundant from, you know, someone taking the invoices, filling out a warrant summary sheet, and then depending on if it's payroll or vendor, okay, goes to an accountant, goes to a treasurer collector's office, got to be...
They do it all over again.
Got to be re-entered.
Yeah. They do it three months. For instance, agents are entered into a sheet by the supervisor. Then they come to my office and they're entered into the collection software. Then they go upstairs for refunds, and these same people are entered again by the accountant. So it's, you know, it's just like we're triple entering, double entering, all over the place.
Yeah. And good, good chances for errors to be made, too.
Yeah.
And I will say, on that, on that specific issue, when I was in Chester, we, Chester got a IT grant from the state of, it was enough to cover the enhancement of that software. So where department heads were just entering into the system. So there was one-time entry, and then it was flowing through the system to the Softwareite.
Yep.
It's a huge project, but...
Harper's called me the other day because they, you know, finally called because they want us to sign them on as the new payroll company. And they said that many towns and cities have been signing on using CARES Act money or...
Who was this they called?
Harper's Payroll. So it's a pretty popular payroll company.
For CARES?
Where you don't do as much in-house payroll anymore. It's more of outsourcing. They actually, they do a lot of the work. They do the W-2s, they do AC forms, they file their quarterly reports, pay their federal and state taxes, so...
I don't think I can hear her.
Should I go?
Yeah, maybe. Sorry. I keep forgetting. I don't know how well we broadcast with the, from here, but yeah.
So yeah, it's kind of a, more of outsourcing payroll.
Uh-huh.
Because they do do a majority of the work. So I was just hired as the West Hampton Treasurer to replace Goshen. Not that I, I really do love Goshen, but it's such a far ride. So they use Harper's there, so I'm excited to see how it works.
You could find out how that works and maybe recommend something to us.
You know, it even has something like, you can have a employee portal, so employees can go on and print their direct deposits or reprint their W-2s, you know, all things. So it would lessen the busyness of the office. So maybe there's even the possibility of, okay, well, we have the system, but we can reduce employee hours, you know, to help cover that cost. So, but something like that.
Well, that might be something to...
And there could be tons of time savings. So Harper's, like we, me and Vicki had met with Vadar, so that's one. And Harper's is compatible with Vadar.
It should be compatible with Softwareite also.
And Softwareite, which would be, so if we went to the upgraded Springbrook, right? Is that what that, for Softwareite, if we upgraded?
I think there's even an upgrade to Softwareite without going to Springbrook.
Oh, really?
I'll check.
We've already changed their name to...
Conversation up here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I really don't like to stand up there. But all the correspondence I get from them is from Springbrook now. Like when I, so I didn't know if Softwareite just fully changed over.
I'll check and find out.
Like if I get emails from Maddie or Bendy, it's all Springbrook.
So and did these, this upgrade using CARES Act, was it justified because of the additional lines for various...
Makes sense.
That was enough to be able to use CARES money?
You know, I could reach out to the salesperson who called, but he didn't, I'm not sure.
Do you know, Ed?
Yeah.
I think they justified because of the incredible increase in like lines for...
Yeah.
Reporting.
I don't know. Probably if they use the employee portal, then the employees entering their time sheet online remotely from home.
Right, right. Remotely.
Which I'd have some issues with. I mean, it's one thing if the department heads putting it in, it's another if the employee is, but yeah.
Do you, I don't know if you have to use that portion of it, though.
You don't have to. I mean, Softwareite, Softwareite's got a payroll portion.
Yeah.
You know, also, one of the things I get a kick out of here is the amount of proprietary third-party software that, you know, we use. Softwareite has utility software module that, you know, we could be using instead of point for our water billings, you know. So I think there's a ton in the software portion. It's not cheap, but you could at least have time efficiencies out of it, and there may be some cost savings as far as...
Well, maybe that's something to figure out with...
Person power, or person hour goes to.
Yeah. Whether any of the CARES Act money could possibly go toward that, or, you know, whether, I don't know, with the, with the community, the IT compact?
Well, the thing with the community IT compact is there's only one project. Art and I went through that last year. Art helped me immensely. We came up with like a $58,000 application, but it was a bunch of different projects we had put together. And they came back to us and said, "We'll only do one."
And that's where we got like six thousand bucks or something, right?
Right. So I mean, to me, the two that come to the top of my mind, and we just probably have to pick out, depending on the cost, you know, if we got all the money to do it, would be, okay, what's the cost to upgrade our financial software, number one, and could we get that through the compact IT? My number two choice, or, you know, or if we can't get the money for, to upgrade our financial software, my number two choice would be, okay, webpage, webpage design change, and, you know, basically going to a friendlier version where some of the department heads can put that in, some of that basic information, whether it's their committee, their assignments, or, you know, some of the basic information.
Keep some of their own information updated.
Right, exactly. Rather than having to send it out to a third-party vendor.
So community IT might be able to do that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
I mean, those are the two things that come to my mind for the community compact IT.
Well, we can certainly talk about that with the tech committee, too. So, good. Thanks, Jen. That's good, good information. And as you do your experience in West Hampton, just keep us posted how that really works in terms of that software.
Yeah, I'll let you know. The treasurer in there now says that she loves it. So it's something, too, that the city of East Hampton had just switched to a couple of years ago. A lot of different towns and cities are switching to Harper's. It's just, you know...
Sounds like something we...
Yeah, more efficient.
Want to hear about.
So, yeah, so I'll let you know. But I'm going to go now. I really wanted to be here for the revenue and expense report in case there were questions.
Well, thank you.
Of course, tonight there really weren't many, so...
Thank you for staying.
I couldn't answer that. I couldn't answer that.
Thanks, Jen.
Appreciate it, Jen. Thanks a lot. All right.
And I'll tell you, one of the things Jen is waiting for Regina and I is because of the fact that we sold some of our existing bonds and reissued them. When you look at the debt schedule, you'll see, you know, there's a couple in there. Why is this $58,000 in the hole or whatever? It's because of that piece of accounting that, okay, yeah, we got, we reissued, but we got money to pay off the old one, so...
That doesn't show.
Got to bounce it out.
We have to, yeah, we have to come up, we have to develop the revenue account numbers for those to go into to make those negatives go away.
Gotcha. Okay. Good.
Thanks again, Jen.
All right. Thanks, Jen. Take it easy. All right. Moving on. Are we up to the bylaws at the moment?
I believe so.
Okay. We have three on the list here. Draft bylaw for nuisance and nuisance slash peace and quiet, soliciting and canvassing, and numbering on buildings, building numbering, numbering buildings. And Francine, maybe just, I don't know if we, I don't know if we want to spend time and actually kind of go through these, but maybe you could talk about them. I think a couple of these, one of them at least is a brand-new one, right? But if these were ones that residents had been especially interested in, the nuisance, peace and quiet one, and the soliciting have been two that have been asked of the committee.
Soliciting is top of the, top of the list.
Top of the list.
In few lines. And so with that, I mean, just so everyone understands how we went about this. I mean, we developed the language. We looked at other towns, looked at their bylaws. We, you know, essentially replicated, you know, portions that we thought were appropriate for Southampton. And as we developed these drafts, we would go back to the, the department or the committee that would be, you know, had, had most responsibility for it. So, for instance, soliciting and canvassing obviously goes back to the police department. So Ian spent a lot of time with us going through this, giving us language as well and corrections so that you know that he's agreed with everything that's in here. And as far as trying to get your input, we had presented this before to the select board, and since we have two new members, we thought we would go through it again. But we want to turn this around pretty quickly. So my recommendation is going to be, if you have comments or you would like to make some, suggest some modifications, if we could do that in the next week or so, get that to me, and then when the bylaw committee meets on August 5, we could discuss those proposed changes and whether or not to put them in here, and then move forward. I just don't want to hold this up any longer than necessary.
And I think just one thing to add since I'm on the committee, the idea of doing a public meeting on this, this we had not done for some of the other bylaws that have been passed through recently, because most of those had existed and there were some language changes or maybe a paragraph added or something, but not really wholesale changes.
Right.
These two, maybe less so with the building numbering, but, but certainly the nuisance and the soliciting canvassing really do take a stab at putting it down much more clearly. There's, I think there's nothing on, nuisance is a brand-new one. Am I not right on that?
Yes.
Has a brand-new one, and soliciting had like, you know, a little...
A little paragraph.
Three, four sentences at most on it. So this has gone into a lot of detail, and Ian has been one of the prime, prime ones even on the nuisance one, isn't he not? Right?
Right.
And especially when it talks about, on the soliciting canvassing one, you'll notice about the person soliciting needs to have a badge and everything that goes on the badge.
They have to be registered. They have to pay a fee.
Yeah. All of that has been done with Ian's input because a lot of it, we were concerned would be too onerous on, on him to do some of these things. And he felt that this was what was going to be necessary to protect...
Right.
...anybody from unwanted people banging on their doors. And so he has really, you know, put this out there. But I think, you know, getting feedback on that. The nuisance one, just to say that this has not got things in here, what it's protesting, what it's talking about now, just reading it out for the folks that are listening at home here, maybe, would be excessive noise would be prohibited between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So that's obviously something. But it defines noise, but we have not, in this one, I think you have not done anything with decibel levels because that had been a particular issue where we would have to have the way to measure the decibel of whatever was being considered...
Noise.
...noise by a neighbor or whatever.
We would have to buy some piece of equipment that would measure it, then have somebody trained to use it, and then be on the spot. This is, this is a little more general. This kind of makes it more common sense, I think, the descriptions that are in here.
Well, it's general, but you have no standards. So what is excessive noise? That's different between your opinion and my opinion.
Okay, but if you look at other towns...
There's a definition on there.
If you look at other towns and bylaws that they have on this, this is the language that they've used.
Yep. So...
Okay? So it comes back to common sense. We're talking about peace or safety of reasonable persons of ordinary sensitivity. To me, that's, that's the yardstick.
But the excessive noise one does talk about any noise that emanates from various places here that is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet. So that's...
That's the definition.
That's the definition that's in here as, as a benchmark for this one.
And these are some things that people are concerned with, you know, construction noises, emergency equipment noises. I mean, things that I think we've covered pretty much everything that Ian said to us. These are the kinds of complaints and calls that I get in my office to address. And I have nothing to look back on, to point to, to say, this is or isn't, and this might be how we would resolve it.
Right. And I think, I think he was feeling, too, that this would help his officers in enforcing these kinds of things, to at least lay this out, that we're talking about excessive noise from motor vehicles, dirt bikes, motorcycles...
ATVs.
Audio systems, et cetera. But then there's a list of exceptions here for emergency vehicles, highway, public utility vehicles, agriculture-related things, et cetera. So it's, it's trying to, to break that out.
I guess my question is, what is the penalty?
What is?
What is the penalty?
That's the, the next question. Because what, what is referred to in here, I think I was noticing this, Francine, I think one thing that we don't have in here, we refer to, if it's not in that one, it's in the soliciting one. Soliciting one has an application fee, number one, for the entity, and then it also has a, a bigger penalty for...
Yeah. It says under six enforcement, non-compliance with this town-approved bylaws subject to non-criminal ticketing as established by the fee schedule periodically set by the select board in town meeting. So...
I'm sorry, I was looking at the nuisance.
Yeah, nuisance. Number six enforcement provision, right here.
Okay. So there's some...
Yeah. Part of what we need to do, though, I think in accompanying that, is take a look at the non-criminal ticketing bylaw that we currently have, and/or whether that actually has the list, a complete list of the fees, fines, penalties, whatever, or if that's in a separate select board policy. I'm not sure where that lies.
I think what we had talked about is keeping it as a separate schedule so that...
Could be modified.
If there were ever changes in the fees, we wouldn't have to go back and change the whole bylaw all over again.
Right.
So it would be just one separate document, which we currently have. We do have a fee schedule.
Well, I would agree with that until the recent Attorney General's comments on the...
The wet lens one?
With the wet lens where the Attorney General is now saying that fines have to be in the bylaw.
Yeah. But, but I think if, if in the bylaw, because there is a, and it's, it's not a very complete bylaw, if I recall, the non-criminal...
Right.
...ticketing one really needs some work. And in that, maybe, is where that listing would be. But again, the idea was not to have it so embedded in a bylaw that you've got to change the bylaw all the time.
And I'm, and I'm hopeful that this group that we now are contracting with, that this is, they have the expertise, that they might lend us, you know...
An idea, maybe.
Some, some help in how we construct these things so that we're not going back and forth all the time with minor changes in the...
Well, you're not going to be surprised, Amy, say that I don't support bylaws that establish social mores in town. I feel that, I mean, even like the numbering, I get that it's safety issue. I get that it gives the police some arm. But, you know, if you look at the bylaw that talks about nuisance slash peace and quiet, it goes into incredible specificity with lots of exceptions. The soliciting one, you can't go and solicit after 5:00 PM. Every boy scout that's ever come to my house came after 5:00.
There are exceptions.
Let me just finish. I just want to say...
But there are exemptions.
I know. There's, there's huge specificity, and then there's huge exemptions. And as far as the numbering, I mean, here's an example. The address number shall be Arabic numbers or alphabetical numbers with a stroke width not less than 0.5 inches. Number shall be, not be spelled out and must meet the minimum size as designated in Section 1. So I, and they have to have high contrast and affixed to be readily, readily readable from the public or private way. I feel that I just don't support bylaws that are so specific that establish social mores for the town. I mean, I told you before, my mother lived in a place where you couldn't leave the garage door open. You know, there's, there's just so many, and she hated it, by the way. She left there. But I just feel like I just don't, I just think there's a fine line between what's safe and what gives the police some sort of guidance. In the end, I mean, we're a town of 6,000 people. I mean, it seems as if, like Ed just said, like there's, there's wiggle room, and the police are going to end up having to make that judgment anyway of what is reasonable. So we're going to this high level of specificity with a huge number of exemptions, only to come back to where we were in the first place, which is the police is going to make a decision about whether this violates it or not.
Well, I mean, that's why we're going to have a public meeting. We can take input and we can see how people feel before it, nothing is finalized. But again, coming back to the soliciting and to the noise, we went to the people, departments mostly involved. With numbering buildings, we went to fire, we went to police, and we went to the building superintendent. And they all really felt that this was important to them because the two, the first two, fire and police, respond to emergencies and finding homes, especially when we're doing a little more of attached housing, you know, little community places where things may not be clearly marked addresses and if there's an emergency, not a fire that someone can see, but a medical emergency or something like that to find the homes. That's an issue. And, you know, and we took this also to zone. That's an issue. And, you know, and we took this also to zoning.
Isn't that on the resident though?
Pardon?
I mean, isn't that a resident decision about whether, I mean, I mean, I just feel like I'd like to, you know, leave it up to the residents.
Yeah. Well, I think that's why though, we wanted to take it to, to another level and not just let it be a select board discussion, but actually take, because these are potentially controversial, right? And I think to have this be put out for a public meeting and just whether, you know, probably have it here or something in, in September and let, let it well-publicized, let people come in and give us feedback, but also have the opportunity to send in an email with feedback in that interim month. So we have an idea of what, what people are thinking and include all of those written comments into a public meeting sometime.
Into the meeting.
And if it goes nowhere, it goes nowhere. But I mean
I just, I thought on the numbering of buildings, I, I thought that was already covered under state law under the E-911 rollouts that came out in the 90s. That, it's very similar to a lot of this language.
Yeah.
You know, it is, you know, as far as feedback on numbering of buildings, you know, it'd be wonderful if we would just number them in order.
That too.
Section of College Highway.
But they don't.
And, and, and that job, that job falls to the planning board because they assign the building number and then, then you get the postmaster that comes by and says, well, you've got to use this number and
Yeah.
My number on my street was changed because of E-911.
Yeah.
So I went to zoning.
I don't know. Again, I would think the building inspector would, would know that about the E-91, but anyway, yeah.
In regards for the numbering of the buildings, like, is that something that we don't have to make an entire bylaw about? Because it does seem excessive, to be honest, to have an entire bylaw in regards to the numbering of, of how people present the numbers on their homes. But is it something that the building inspector can consider when they're doing their certificate of occupancy? Like, hey, you, you need to have a visible number for police and fire to, to view? Or is it just something that they can, the building inspector can consider when he's doing his walkthrough? Or is it something that we have to have a full bylaw for?
Well, if, if you look at section nine, I mean, it's going to be going forward that the building inspector would, that would be something that they would look at. But under section nine, in the interest of public safety, owners of existing houses and buildings are strongly encouraged. We're not saying that you have to
I know, but it's kind of
to comply with these numbering requirements.
It's kind of, it's confusing to have a bylaw and then say, you're strongly encouraged to follow this bylaw.
And I'm going to be funny because of the three, numbering of buildings outweighs the other two a thousandfold. Because guess what? This is life-saving emergency management information. And if you've driven around this town and tried to find somebody's house with a number, oh my God.
In the rain.
But, but this is the type of stuff, this is the type of stuff when that ambulance goes out.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, you know, it takes minutes off the
Yeah.
Off the response time.
And there's the line between the police's and ambulance need and the resident's desire to do something or not.
Yeah.
And doesn't the resident like know that? They know that if they don't have a very clear number on their home, an ambulance and fire are not going to be able to find them easily? I don't know. I just feel like you, you have your own personal responsibility for your home and to be responsible for the emergency services to get there.
Yeah. Well, I think this though, I mean, this will be the opportunity because we've heard from the town officials that find these things important, that they feel like they need something that they can hang their hat on and use to be, that they can, they can use to enforce any, any violations or perceived violations or complaints by neighbors. So now the point is to open this up to residents to have a chance to give us feedback and say, hey, forget it. You know, we're not going to abide by this. This doesn't make sense. Or we like this, but we don't like this. I mean, I think
Right. And the final product ends up at town meeting, correct?
Right. Yes.
Yes. I mean, it's, it would come
It might be a special.
Well, it would be revised based on, on any feedback that would come from
On the input that we get
The public meeting.
and then on the comments of the E-360 people and then
It would come to select board to, to agree on. It would still probably end up going to KP Law to look at and then it would go to town meeting. Yeah.
I think, I think ultimately you're going, this is hypocritical in the language. You're saying the homes ultimately shall have affixed to, and then section nine, you're saying strongly encouraged.
But it's, it's, this is, I think, what it's trying to say, if I'm understanding this, is that this is going forward for new construction.
Yes.
That this is required. But we're not saying we've got to go back and modify every house in town.
Oh, oh.
So it's looking at new construction. So that's why number nine
That's why section nine is there.
Owners of existing houses are strongly encouraged to comply with this. But it's not saying, okay, everybody in town, go change your numbers.
But it would, but
New construction.
But as, if a building, you know, if permits were being pulled for existing homes, for instance, they would now, this would be something that the building inspector would be looking at when he goes.
Yeah.
So is that clear? That's not clear in this first paragraph.
Well, it may not be. I mean, that's where, there's a whole lot worth spending that still needs to be done. I'm not saying it's ready to go.
Okay. All right. I know. I'm sorry.
No, 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 definitely. But I mean, that's the intent, I think, of this one is to say, you know, not making it retroactive and mandatory for existing homes, but the idea would be for new, new construction.
And it says in section eight, that the building inspector is the designated enforcement who will apply these requirements to all new construction and/or renovations that require building permits.
Right. So whether this alone, I mean, back to Joyce's question, whether this alone would be enough for the building inspector to just do as part of his normal duties and walk through and approvals or, you know, certificates of occupancy or whatever, or does it really need to be a bylaw?
Right.
Obviously, at one point, that was his thinking, but maybe that will change. So, so that's the idea. So I think, just to recap then, what we would like to do, right, is to get these, what you mentioned earlier, is to get these up on the website.
Get them up on the website in the, in the condition that they're in now, so that people can see them. We need to have an email, incoming email set up for the bylaws committee so that people who have comments can email them to this one source. We will gather that information. We, over a period of a month, that these bylaws will be posted on the town website. After that, and at a public meeting, those comments will be shared in addition to gathering others. Modifications will then be made. We'll come back here with all of those changes before we would go forward with it to our attorney and then the next step would be town meeting. And at which time, people may not, not, not agree with them.
And just to reiterate, out of all the bylaws that exist as the general bylaws now, these two are the specific ones that we have heard the most on from residents. These are the two complaints on nuisance and on soliciting.
Nuisance and soliciting in favor.
These are the ones that people
I agree.
want to know. What are the hours? What can be done? What can't be done? So that's why we
This is a response to that. Yes.
So that's, that's in response to that. But, you know, how we balance, you know, the personal
Individual rights and
Yeah, personal rights and, and abiding by some sort of guidelines and standards is, it's a, it's a fine line. So, but hopefully that will be a plan going forward.
Ultimately, my goal with bylaws is, is not to have to send things that we know probably won't pass at town meeting, not to send it off to KP Law, to spend legal fees on something that we know probably won't pass or might not pass. So I just want to take that onto consideration. That's something I'm always taking into consideration, like, whether or not I agree on it, is it going to pass? Because what is the town really thinking? So I'm happy to hear from the public. Yeah, I'll be really interested
No, so I think that, that would give us that option now
Right.
to, to have that input. And then, you know, if it looks like it's not necessary or people are, you know, not finding it, you know, relevant to what they need to do, then, then it doesn't have to go anywhere.
Right. And people for themselves will decide what, what's important. And that's what their vote represents. If they say no, it's no.
Okay. So with that, can we get these up on the website, Ed? And is there any issue with getting a, an email address? Is that possible for the committee or?
Can's a physical possibility, which it is.
Okay. All right. Good. I don't think Francine wants to use her personal email in other words, right?
No, I don't. No.
I checked. We're all, we're all out of email slots though. Sorry.
Are we really? Seriously?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
No. I think, I think I've, I think I've actually already set it up.
I mean, there's probably a couple that aren't
Then we need to set up a password to access it.
Well, there's two ways to do, there's two ways to, if you want, if you're going to want to respond from it, yes, we'll have to send up a password because I could also just have it forwarded to your personal email. But if you want to use it for responses to, yeah, I'll
I'm not sure we're going to respond. We're going to collect, but we're not going to get into an exchange.
Then I could, I could just set it up and forward it to any other email addresses you wanted me to. And then you don't have to worry about another password.
Okay, that, that
I think the idea would be not to respond during the
Right.
feedback time, but rather have, collect all that.
Yeah.
Make it public at the time of the public hearing or right before that.
Right. Public meeting.
And add it to the set of information.
Right. And that, that would be the time that
More efficiently doing it.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We can do it that way though.
So not to, not to overcomplicate it, but it almost, you receive it and then that email account should almost have an automatic reply. Acknowledging receipt of this, these will continue to be collected until the public hearing and such and such a date at such and such a time.
We can, we can do that too.
Know it went through.
This will be shared. Yes.
Yeah. We can do that too.
That's a good idea.
Very good idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. Moving on.
Automatic response.
Great. Okay. Next one is select board reference documents. This is just actually one of my issues. I've asked Ed to make a, a separate folder on Dropbox so that we don't have to continually search for documents that are kind of background that we may use from time to time. We don't have to print them out every select board meeting and waste a lot of paper on them. And so he started that. What we've got in there are things like the master plan. There are various contracts in there for police, fire, union contracts. There are
Personal service contracts.
Some personal service contracts. There's, I think we've got some of the PQB information in there, the hazard mitigation plan, which we'll be looking at sometime later in the year because it expires in December. And probably the biggest one, and I wanted to just point this out to everybody, but especially to, to John and to Joy, is these quote unquote Selectmen's Handbook. If you haven't heard of that or seen that, that's in there. And I think all of us can do a, a refresher. I know I started rereading it again for the third time, I think. But I think every year it's kind of good to kind of go through it and, and refresh our minds about that. But that's just a sort of general overview of the Selectmen's Board of Select, yeah, hello, Select Board's role.
You said that's in the Dropbox?
Yes, it's in the Dropbox. And it's, I think you called it Handy Reference Documents or something. It's, it's a separate file with all of these so that they can be there. We can refer to them. And if we have to access something, we don't have to have it printed out every meeting. We can just know that we've, and if you want to pull them out of Dropbox and organize them yourselves for your own files, you know, they're there. But they're kind of, it's just one spot. I, I know I found, I spent a lot of time searching for documents that just drive me crazy.
Two things that I search for a lot, I don't know if it's worth putting in there, if it's helpful to other people too. I tend, I suppose I could just keep my desktop to that matter. Two things are the personnel policies of the town.
Right.
And the other one is the most recent warrant or any like warrant in the previous year, like the annual town meeting warrant, any special election warrant. It just seems like I'm always looking back at them.
Okay.
So that would be helpful for me.
Uh huh. Okay.
And the personnel policies.
Yeah. I think the personnel
That's it. It's in there.
The personnel policy handbook is in there, even though they might be updating it. That's in there, I think. Okay. So that's there for just
That's a multi-year process.
Say what?
That's a multi-year process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but anyway, so that's just there as, as reference. And I think it might just help us just get a little bit, at least for me, it'll help me be a bit more organized and not have to be searching for things. Okay. All right. But I really do recommend taking a look through the, what they call the Massachusetts Selectmen's Handbook and just sort of get an idea of what that's all about. Okay. The next item is the Greenway update. Ed, some thoughts there that you wanted to add to?
Sure. And I'm going to throw a question at you to, to make you think about some things. We have received two $100,000 grants for, to go towards the acquisition of the right-of-way of the Greenway. Now, the Greenway is, up until this point, we have not been able to utilize community preservation funds because that right-of-way is what they call rail-banked. So that in reality, you don't purchase it outright because the railroad does have a right to take it back. However, I will say the probabilities of them ever taking it back in the future, especially after, once you put a bike path on it, is about the same as walking into Foxwater, Mahogany Sun and rolling the dice and winning $2 million on that first roll. So we've got those two pieces of the puzzle. At the annual town meeting, town meeting and on an election ballot question, the voters of Southampton said yes to a
Dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion. Oh, I knew it was a dead exclusion. I'm trying to remember. I think it was $270,000.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So that's out there and in play, and that's how we were going to go forward. With the state budget that the governor did sign, it contains language that now will allow us to use community preservation funds for the acquisition of rail banking agreements. So, question is, do we move forward and utilize the debt exclusion? Do we say, okay, well, let's hold that on the side and start moving forward down the road to acquire this, but let's request funding from community preservation, whether it be to do the balance of that acquisition or acquisition and some funding to start the design process. And number one, if you don't want to utilize the debt exclusion, that's, I think what I came up with was 12 cents per $1,000 on number one.
Right.
On people's taxes, number two, and John will be able to back me up a little bit on this thing. We have a levy limit and a levy ceiling. So our levy limit is our levy limit. It's what you live within with a two and a half and you can't exceed. If you want to exceed that, then you get going towards your levy ceiling. And that's where overrides and debt exclusions come in because they all, at least not on the full amount, but whatever you ended up, you know, borrowing or expending for that particular year, go on the documents to DLS and those count to go towards your levy ceiling.
Even if the debt exclusion is a temporary
Yes, because that's on there for five years, 10 years or whatever. So that's going to stay on there.
Yeah. Okay.
One of the things I had forgotten about of going into this last annual town meeting was, we only had about $200,000 to go to get to our levy ceiling. So I knew we had some growth that is going to come into play and add to that. But we are close to our ceiling. So when we start talking about projects, whether it's, you know, 1.6 isn't a lot, but we still have to borrow for the 1.6 million for the East Street Bridge. When you start talking about seven or $8 million borrowings for public safety complexes, if we ever were to look at another override, those all come into play, but you still have to live within your levy ceiling. So actually, as Jen has pointed out, a multi-year budget plan is ideal, whether it's three years or five years. It's a good step in the right direction. But as we start talking about some of these projects and, you know, we got towards looking at debt exclusions for trying to buy highway trucks and whatever just because we, it was tough to fit them in the budget, those all eat up what we have available for the levy ceiling. So as we do our planning and, you know, even think about, you know, broadband expansion or some of these other things, it all plays into that. So it's like, okay, if you, if you looked at, I mean, probably theoretically, that $270,000, it's, it's an acquisition. We could probably borrow that for 15 or 20 years and make the yearly payment small. I always like to pay them off sooner or later, but whether it's, you know, 10 grand or 30 grand, that is going towards your levy ceiling. So it's another reason I'm bringing up the fact that, okay, we do have another, shall we say, option avenue to utilize for some of the funding to acquire that right away.
What do we believe the acquisition cost is going to be?
We'd estimate it three
We estimated 370 in total, which takes into account some legal costs.
Got it to 270 for the question.
Right. So we got 200,000 of that, leaves 100 and another 170. We were originally thinking it would probably be 270.
Of that, of that second hundred, did that have a 25% match or $25,000 match?
20% minimum match. So, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we'd have to put that in. So we're really at 225,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
And could CPA money be used for that match?
That's what they're saying.
Yes. That's normally what we would, we could go for that part. But now we've got the possibility of really using CPC money got the possibility of really using CPC money towards the right-of-way, which is all brand-new.
The governor's did leave it in his final budget bill.
Yeah, so it's in the final budget.
So my two comments on that is, just quickly on the levy ceiling, is one of the things that's getting the finance team back together is, I'm going to ask that they reach out to, I think it's Marcia at DLS, because she has built out a five-year levy ceiling limit projections with all your debt and all that, and it's very user-friendly to use to help with this, and paints the picture for the community to see where making these decisions, how it impacts everything going forward.
That'd be great.
But secondly, yes, the citizens voted for the debt override, I get that. What that tells me is we need to acquire that land, but utilizing that debt override is the last funding source.
Yeah.
So we have, we have to exhaust all other means, and if we can still get the land and actually never have to do that 270, then that would be the direction I would ask to go in.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, that has not been the option until like literally last week.
Right.
I mean, when the governor's bill, you know, when it went through, to be able to use the CPC money for railbanking. So what that would mean would be probably the 170-ish from CPC to finish off that total, right, plus...
I might request a little bit more than that, like two or two and a quarter.
And probably the 25, we still need to do the 25 or 25,000 or something for the Mass Trail map. So, you know, we're still, we're talking a chunk of money from CPC.
Right.
Which, you know, hopefully they'll be accommodating, but I mean...
It has to go in front of town meeting.
And that goes to town meeting as well.
Right.
And also, we borrowed against future CPC. Do you know where we stand on that money?
Oh, we've only paid, I think, one year, maybe two of the 10-year commitment.
Okay, so I don't know what's in the bucket of open space or recreation.
Undesignated's pretty high. I think it's, I think, wow, I got to do the subtractions from this past annual town meeting, but that one, I believe, was up to like 600,000 or so.
Yeah, that came up at the town meeting, but I think that Virginia had commented that right now with where things are at, she didn't want to bother too many people to get the balances, but that's something we'll want to know for the next meeting.
It wasn't the undecideds.
So there should be some money in undesignedated that could cover this couple hundred thousand we're talking about, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And what are the deadlines on these two $100,000 grants?
I might, go ahead, I'm good.
One of them, I'm going to see if we can stretch to two years. The other one, we got one year to expend it. But like I say, we can start down the road. My intent is if we want, if we'd like to consider the CPC option of moving forward with that with the thought of putting it on the, what I would call the winter special town meeting.
Yeah, yep. And going to the committee first, obviously.
And then, since the town has approved the debt exclusion, do we bring that back to cancel that at a town meeting? Is that how that happens, or?
That would be my recommendation, yes. Once we're free and clear of that, I'm not going to utilize it.
Because otherwise, it stays on the recapture sheet.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it counts as if you did it because it's authorized.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, yeah. I think my, I kind of like that idea, I mean, if we don't have to use the debt exclusion, I think that would be a big win in many ways, and probably, yeah.
And just keep in the back of your minds, we're still going to have to find design funds somewhere between 600 and 700,000 to do this project, so.
Because the money waiting at DOT on the tip sheet, I believe, is really more for the, for 6 million, but it's for the construction for the most part.
Yep, 3.5 miles, I was just checking right now. We're on the 2022 Southampton Greenway Trail construction. It says 2022, from Coleman Road to Route 10, 3.5 miles, and it's 6080, 722, so 6 million.
Okay, I was thinking it was 24, actually, I didn't think it was 2020.
In East Street, so I've kept this email for a long time.
Oh, maybe I confused it with the...
Yeah, East Street is 25, and that, we're earmarked at 5 million.
Check that out with DOT on the tip sheet, then. Don't think we'll be ready to construct in 2022. But one thing I was going to suggest, I don't know when the, I've talked to Erin Towser, who's the new chair of the Greenway Committee, I don't know, they're planning on having a meeting, but I don't know that they've scheduled one yet, but it strikes me that maybe, you know, you should maybe attend that, just to sort of lay this out to them, too, because...
Yeah, I had to let Erin know that of the second 100,000 from Mass Trail, so, but I would follow up with this.
But I mean, the idea of going to CPC and maybe not doing the debt exclusion. Yeah, that sounds like a, probably a good suggestion.
John Martin was an alternate to the MPO board. Do we have a seat or not on that board?
No, it's a regional seat and a regional alternate. I'm actually, of course, we probably never notified them that John wasn't here anymore, so I'll reach out to them and let them know, and then they will go through the whole process again for an alternate.
Which board is that?
It's the...
MPO.
That's, they're really in charge, I think, a lot of, they're making a lot of the decisions around some of this.
Well, they make the decisions on the tip, so, yeah.
Okay, good, all right.
Charlie having previously on it, I think, as a primary, right? Then John, and then...
I think you're right, yes.
They've got on as an alternate.
Okay, all right, good.
This one's the original.
Good enough, okay.
Does it say in the medical planning organization?
If we're done with the Greenway, we'll move on.
Does it say in the, MPO, what's it say?
What the initials stand for.
Oh, Useful Planning Organization, or...
Yeah, okay, all right, so I think we're down to any other business, necessary business that cannot wait until the next regular August 10th Select Board Meeting.
Well, I would just like to remind everybody, in Tammy's absence, I'll take on her job and say, celebrate Southampton is Friday, the 13th of August, and Saturday, the 14th of August, and there's a great lineup, all day long planned for both of those dates. So please plan on coming, I think they're having a planning meeting coming up. But it's already looking like a lot of wonderful activities.
A lot of people have...
We have good weather.
Have booked, yeah, I know, a lot of people have booked in, and I know they've been getting lots of raffle prizes and things, and so, yeah, I think it should be quite a good, good event, so, that's great. All right, John, you sounded like you had something to present at one point.
Sure, so two weeks ago, we took up the matter of the PCF regarding Robin Richard at the Highway Department, and we sent two questions back to the PPPB board. Specifically, now that there is a specific person in this position, take a look at the individual's experience in a similar positions, and for the PPPB to make a recommendation at what specific step of the grade eight scale that this individual should be brought in on the pay scale. And the Select Board had recommended an hourly wage of 1816 per hour. So the matter came up at the, at the board level, and just because the minutes aren't here, this individual is on the board. When it came up, the individual excused themselves from the room for the entire duration. I was tasked with keeping the minutes, which I forgot about the next day, until it came up this morning, which is kind of why it's short notice. But we had a very long conversation about the steps, and how is that interpreted, and that, and at the end of the conversation, it was clear that there really wasn't any guidance on assigning steps. There was more focus on the grades, and then the steps were left. And there, there were three members of the committee there, the vice chair, myself, and the finance appointee, Donna Whitley. And at the conclusion of it, after listening to a lot of testimony from the department head in that, the board voted to, in part one of the question, is the range, I believe, is step six to eight, 1831 to $20.80 was the range, but specifically the hourly rate, taking into consideration people of a similar position within the town that did not, but people in a similar position within the town, but having potential to do more harm to the town, so they had, therefore had greater responsibility. The committee voted three to oh, with one abstaining or not present, to recommend $19.25.
As opposed to what was 2270?
Correct. And with that, with the 20 hours in the general highway line item and five hours in the transfer station, understanding that at the end of the year, there would be additional funds left over.
And what percentage of increase is that?
8%.
Going from the 1781 right now?
Yeah.
I don't believe it ever got, I mean, I think we had recommended the 1861, but it never got, it was not implemented, it was just a recommendation, so I believe the payment was...
And what was the range again, John?
1781, so...
1831 to $20.80.
So this is within that?
You voted and recommended 18?
1925.
1925.
Okay.
So that, it's an 8%.
Yeah, 8% increase.
And it's 8% over what was initially approved?
No, 8% over their current rate, which is $17.81.
Which included the 2% increase?
I don't...
From the previous year, I'm asking, I don't...
I don't think so.
But it's a new person in the position.
It was the PCF that we had signed before.
They started in April, right, or was it May?
The original PCF that we signed was for $18?
No, 1781.
17...
1781, because I remember the note on it saying, if there's anything more than this, it's not covered in the budget. There was a handwritten note by Regina on that.
So the other thing that I would just add for the board is, two weeks ago, when I asked the question, what our authority was, it was thought that it was we approve or deny or send back, but first, thank you Francine for forwarding over the bylaws to me. Page 17 of the bylaws under PCFs, section...
Yeah, this is personnel, this has nothing to do with the town general bylaws.
Correct, the Personnel Rules and Regulations.
Yes.
That the PPPB is supposed to follow, says that section six, page 17, 6.0A, the Board of Selectmen has the final authority to approve, amend, or disapprove the PRF, and then later uses the same language for a PCF, with or without modification. No additional action may be taken unless authorized by the Board of Selectmen. So I think under the current rules there, the committee, the Board of Selectmen can do whatever they want here, but they asked for guidance from PPPB, and this is what they came back with.
Okay, so just to review, the original PCF, when this position started in April, was approved at 1781, correct?
Correct.
Then the department head went to the PQB to ask for change in the actual step and grade of the position, and it was increased so that the new range of that position was between 1820 and 20-something? Can I just have a sequence of this?
The interim step, backing up, so the, it was originally, correct me if I'm wrong, but the original was approved at 1781. When we had the meeting two weeks ago, the PCF was showing 22-something.
70, and that's because the five hours wasn't accounted for, and so it was an additional five hours, so it came out to 22-something.
Something along that line, and that's what we were questioning and sent Randall back to PQB. And then with the guidance that was provided to them to take a look at that and where this was going to fall on the step, they've now come in with a new range that they believe that position is, of 1831, excuse me, to 2030, and they are recommending to us 1925. So it's considerably less than the 22 we had seen two weeks ago. It's 8% above what the person was hired at.
Then, why did we, I mean, when we were asked to relook at the scoring amount, so that, she was hired at a lower amount that was approved in 1781?
So she was hired at $17.81, which was a grade five.
Okay.
It then was reviewed and moved to a grade eight at some point. A 2% increase on the 1781 got you to $18.16.
That was our recommending, that was our recommendation back to Randall at the last meeting.
And then, then the 1816 was adjusted to $22.70 with the comment of 20-hour, you take the appropriation that passed, regardless of whether or not there was a data entry error in the dollar amount.
Right, right.
And you divide that by the 20 hours, you come up with $22.70.
Right.
So that's what got stopped here and sent back, saying you need more explanation. And so that's what came back up, is, okay, we hear you, here's the three area, because, which is really the middle of the steps for somebody, that's the range, and then we looked, specifically, we looked because of who was at the committee, specifically, we looked at what was the assistant town treasurer being paid, and this dollar amount is below that.
What is the assistant town treasurer being paid?
1975.
So they're kind of on parity.
Right, but the assistant treasurer has sign-in authority for, and, you know, could put, has, and at least two of the three committee members, they had more authority.
Yeah.
And therefore, on the, now granted, we did not compare everybody that's a similar class.
Right, there's an assistant town administrator, too, that I don't think is making, you know, 19...
She's making 1680, I believe.
And that just got raised up because she was so low. So I'm still unclear, because 1781 was grade five, and then a 2% raise to that was 1816. So where's the adjustment for going from grade five to grade eight?
That was a rescore?
She was hired at grade five, at 1781, right? And then you said that she went up 2% because of the town meeting, which was 1816, is a 2%, right? So where is the adjustment to go from grade five to grade eight? Is there any, is there any recommendation for increase, or is that what we're talking about right now?
That's where they came up with the 227...
That's the 1925.
Well, right.
The 1816 or whatever never got implemented, it's still been 1781 all along.
Right, so not even the 2% raise with July 1, because it wasn't in the budget?
Because there is not a signed PCF by the BOs.
Okay, okay, right. So has there been any adjustment from going from grade five to grade eight?
No, she's still sitting in the grade five pay at 1781.
Until we make a decision.
Okay, and what was the decision about why, how'd they come up with the 1925, just based on her background experience and the fact that the range for grade eight is between 1820 and 2030, and therefore 1925 is more or less in the middle?
No, well, specifically, that range is the middle of the 11, of the 11 steps, that's the three middle steps.
Okay, okay.
Six, seven, and eight, right?
I think so.
Is that what you said?
So there's been no accommodation for grade increase that was voted by PQB, right? There's been no increase because, because they vote to increase the grade?
Well, the steps would come off of the grade eight.
The steps come off of the grade eight, right.
Right, not the grade five.
Right, but right now, if you go from 1781 to 1816, that's only, that's only grade five with a 2% raise, right? Am I reading this right?
Yeah, but, so this 1925, if I'm understanding this, is going from the grade five to now the grade eight, step six or whatever.
Yeah, step six?
Well, it's...
Somewhere in the middle, whatever, step five, I don't know where it is, but, somewhere in between that 1831 and 2030.
Okay.
Which, if those are the middle steps on the scale, is what I was hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that goes...
And where are they going to, where's this going to come out of their budget?
The budget, it's currently budgeted to pay $22.70.
Oh, because of the arrow, right there.
So because of the arrow, they recognize that there will be money left over in this line of sorts, right?
Can I ask this, and I should know this answer, but I don't have notes with me to know this. When this position was rescored, I believe, I wish I were more, could be more accurate, I believe that this was on the existing job description, not on a revised, but I'd have to go back and figure that out. I believe.
And it's a non-exempt position, is it not?
Right.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to entertain a motion? What would anybody like to do? So the motion, if I'm hearing, the proposition?
I can make, I can make a motion to start it along, if somebody wants to...
Okay, why don't we do that, just to keep on moving on this?
Make a motion to approve a rate change equivalent to hourly, to an hourly rate of $19.25. nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents, twenty hours to be charged to general highway, and five hours to be charged to the transfer station, with a, I guess, a comment that we understand that those two line items will be under-budgeted for the remainder of the year.
Because they're over-budgeted.
Correct.
The rate's the same?
Yeah, rate is the same for both.
Just five hours for one, and twenty hours for the other.
Right, so technically, the, the budget is, is in excess of what this will be paid out, right? Okay. Would somebody second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, open for discussion, further discussion? Anyone?
Well, I think PQB made a statement last time, if I heard John say at the Board of Assessors, that in, in order to really do this, the job descriptions have to be, there has to be a difference in the responsibilities, we can't just have department heads come to the PQB and say, I want to increase this person's salary, but the job description hasn't changed. So if that did happen, and I do remember watching that PQB meeting, you know, I think that it's, I mean, I don't know how to unravel back, you know, what may have happened here. I do, I'm much happier with the nineteen twenty-five than the, the mistake of twenty-two something, and it doesn't seem like there's been accommodation of a grade increase, and it's in the budget, so I guess I would support it.
Okay.
But I do have concerns about that whole process, about, you know, PQB making decisions about raising people's rate without any change to the job description, so I, I can't speak to...
And I, I think the, I think PPPB is already on the track, because they're already trying to amend their bylaws, so I think they're open to, perhaps, via my position with them, expanding certain sections and clarifying language on, this is when it's appropriate, and this is what you need in order to move these things forward, and then perhaps even supplying additional documents as a packet when it comes up to the board. You know, let's see the old and the new.
Right.
And what those scores were.
Yeah, just so we're clear.
Well, I think one of the values that we've been having, either Personnel Department or having a PQB, is standards and consistency, and so if we're not going to have that, it's very concerning to me, in the short time that I've been on the board here, whether it's the PCFs and the forms that have never filled out properly, definitely improvement since the PCF was, was, but it's been a long history of like, not being consistent, not having a standards-based approach, and I think that's where the, you end up having a lot of problems between departments. So I'm hoping that they are on board with having a consistency and rewriting bylaws and sticking to them.
Okay. Any other comments? Are we ready to take a vote on this? Francine?
I'm, I'm just trying to compare it to other existing salaries, I mean, existing prior to the two percent increase this year, based on the document, the classification, not the system, but the actual hourly rate. As opposed to admin assistant, how many assistants department heads are there? This treasurer, this town administrator, this highway, is that it? The town accountant?
That's an assistant town accountant.
Right. I would say that the assistant in the clerk's office, the treasurer-collector's office, and the accountant's office are, are of a higher grade than just an assistant, but potentially, I would also argue that the assistant in the town administrator's office is a confidentiality employee, so for different reasons, I would hold them to a higher standard, which then should translate to compensation.
And what about the assistant town? Did somebody mention assistant town clerk?
Yeah.
An assistant position again, rather than an admin.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's the assistant town clerk, not an admin assistant.
Right. Assistant clerk, assistant treasurer, assistant town administrator, assistant of the highway department, and assistant accountant.
Right.
That's four.
Yeah, I'm, we're gonna break those up. I'm gonna say, assistant town clerk, assistant treasurer-collector, assistant accountant. Okay, they're together. I have an administrative assistant. Say, is there any others? Although Randall's is worded strangely, or the, I should say, the highway superintendent's, or the highway department's is worded strangely, that's not an assistant superintendent, it's still an assistant admin to the superintendent, or an assistant to the superintendent, it is not an assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent. Is the expectation that these folks step in to become the, you know, the department head in their absence?
Well, for the town clerk, the assistant, I should say, assistant town clerk, the assistant treasurer-collector, the assistant accountant, the assumption should be yes, and you should groom him for that, but all three of those, John's right, they have signing authority.
Yeah, there's the difference.
You know, the assistant to the highway superintendent does not have signing authority.
Last year's...
You know, my assistant really doesn't have signing authority.
Yeah.
No, but she's in a confidentiality position.
Correct.
Different, yeah.
So how do they compare, because you're not, might not be comparing apples and oranges because of longevity and other...
Right.
Background experience, qualifications, certifications?
Yeah.
I mean, traditionally, I've always been brought up for 20 years, is, basically, steps equate to years in the position, so if you've got somebody that comes into whatever position is, whether it's clerical, supervisory, or whatever, they're hired at whatever grade it is, and it's step one. And then year two, they go to step two, or step, and then step three, unless, depending on your general bylaw or your union contract, it gives you the right to, for performance, to holding somebody back from that, but then, and I'm more used to these type of boards being advisory and never with the power and authority that the PPPB has, is, okay, you want to hire somebody, whether it's basically, you know, a clerical position, a management position, or whatever, you know what the grade is, because that, the job description tells you that, but you just pulled the highway superintendent or the DPW director out of Westfield, and you want to hire that person, and you would end up going to, you know, the advisory board and saying, okay, I want, I would like to hire this person, they've got all this experience in the same position, I would like to hire him, and, you know, he or she has been there for seven years, I want to hire him at a step seven because of that experience.
Mm-hmm.
And that's my experience of how steps work.
Yeah.
And are integrated with the grades.
So then, you know, with that kind of experience, it makes sense to be along in the steps, the question is, you know, what was the justification to go from five to eight, if the job description didn't change?
Yeah.
Because that's what determines the grade. I, I'd have to go back and check that, I can't say yes or no. I wish I could definitively, but I can't.
I think, honestly, personally, I think we need to move on this.
Yes.
I'm tired of kicking the football back around on this one. I think we've, whatever happened, happened, we've got to learn from it, we've got to move forward and figure it out as we move forward with PQB, and help be a guide to level of consistency in our expectations on things, but just saying, hey, we don't like this, we need to figure out this and kick it back to PQB again, we need to be done with it tonight.
I think it's a fair compromise, in my, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I think they, they did compromise, and I appreciate their, their looking at that, so, I would like to entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so be it, thank you.
Okay, now I have another issue.
Yes, ma'am.
Same thing.
Now what? A new can of worms?
Of course, with John reading that, I can take this another way, but, the PCF set, I got that from PPPB, that normally would be signed, they don't have nineteen twenty-five in them, they still have the...
See what I mean?
Twenty-two seventy.
Oh, right. They thought I had the original. So I just crossed it, updated it, signed it, noted it, and the minutes were reflected.
They didn't sign it with that number, they would have to initial that change.
Oh, yeah.
I would think.
Yeah, I know they do. Because all we had in our, our package were the twenty-two.
See what I mean? Just like we do, these things are never right.
And the other thing is weird, is...
You don't check off the benefits, or something's not right with it, they redid them because it wasn't logical, there's still no...
I know, I know your frustration, but, yeah. So...
So I believe that, my interpretation says that we, we could amend it, that with the, once it gets to us, we can set it at whatever it is.
Right, but we can't sign for PQB, though.
But we, as the board, we don't need to.
But Chair has to sign it.
We can supersede it.
Right, the Board of Select, even, even if they had signed it, and we said, you know what, it's going, we're gonna drop it down two dollars.
Yeah.
We don't need to go back and ask their permission, we took the vote, we're overriding it, we've vetoed their rate, we set the rate at nineteen twenty-five and voted on it.
Okay.
So the only signatures that truly met our select board?
So, we're, we're modifying, modifying the amount that's on that PCF, is that what you're saying?
Now, what do you have for a date signed for what you think is the original? The seven-two?
Yeah.
When did they meet?
Have not done that before.
No. Can they, I mean...
It was in my report.
When are they meeting again, anytime soon?
I thought it was like the fifteenth.
Yeah, they did.
Or the sixteenth.
It was the fifteenth.
Yeah, but that's the twenty-two seventy, that's the one that we, that got sent back.
Right, they're meeting again not until the nineteenth?
Correct. Or anything with any correction.
Well, they need to.
Can they, can they not issue a corrected one and just send it to us before the next meeting, or?
If they want to get mad at us, they can get mad at one of their own members for the interpretation, but, I mean, he's portraying to us that they recommended nineteen twenty-five, so I don't see where, if I change this to nineteen twenty-five and the Chair signs it, the...
Okay, it's just precedent setting, this is, we've always sent them back if there was something wrong, because they've been signed off by various departments.
Well, I can also remember a former Chair of that committee telling me that we couldn't touch and make any amendments to these, that seems to suggest otherwise.
Well, how about a mini-compromise? If we have to make the change tonight, so this can take effect immediately, but whenever they next meet, they do a revised, one for the record, that shows their signature on it?
We could also change the motion to say that we approve it pending change by the PQB.
All right, well, that might be an idea, we, yeah, I mean...
I'm fine with that.
We approve it, but pending also receipt of a...
Amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I understand past practice and all that, but, but I think the rules say, the buck stops with the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen could do basically anything.
Understood, I, I just don't like...
It's also sending a signal.
Well, but so many, so many cross-offs, it doesn't also look very, very correct. I mean, if, you know, something gets crossed off, we questioned last time when the eighteen or the seventeen got crossed off and twenty-two was written in there, so...
Yeah.
I think just for clean, cleanliness sake, shall we say?
You never know, like, who signed, who agreed to what, if you start crossing things off.
I'm, I'm fine to go ahead and, and sign this tonight, so that it can get in the system and get moving, but I would just, for pro forma's sake, like to suggest that when they meet again, they do a correct, a correct one for the files.
I think that's fine, as long, as long as the employee can be...
Yes.
Because I wouldn't want the employee to wait two and a half months to get the confirmation.
No, I'm not saying that, no, no.
No.
Yeah.
That way, we'll have the correct document. So who did the original motion?
There?
No, I think John...
John made the original motion, and you, Rainey, seconded it.
Okay, do you want to amend the motion? Who did, who made the motion?
I did.
John did.
Want to amend the motion, that's pending approval by the PQB?
Or submit a...
Of an updated form, corrected form.
Yeah, request for a corrected form.
And I'll, I'll second that.
But, wait a minute, just be clear, that it will not take effect until we get that form, that isn't what I was saying?
No, no, we want it to take effect tonight, and we are requesting PQB to provide us a corrected form.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, are we all in agreement with that?
Yep.
All right. Do we need to, do we need to vote on that? Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, it is signed, it will take effect at nineteen twenty-five, but we will request a corrected PCF, signed duly by the PQB, and I can also...
And this is retroactive to July one, correct?
Sign it.
Yes.
Is it? I don't know.
Yes, I believe so. Is that what that's...
Is it retroactive to July one?
Good.
I don't think that was clear. I'm talking about going forward from today.
Yes, effective date is July one.
Seven-one.
Yeah, it says seven-one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're clear. Thank you.
Now I have a second PCF.
You do?
What's the next on the agenda?
Joanna Douglas?
Please, all right, the next one, we do have a personnel change form, we have a PCF. Four, Joanna Douglas, youth librarian, wage increase for FY twenty-two. All right, and John, do you have something you'd like to say about this? Go ahead.
The board reviewed it in, based on the fact that, yeah, the, the board just agreed with it, because of the vote of the, at the town meeting and the budget to increase it.
So this would bring it from eighteen eighty-seven to nineteen sixty-two. It's a thirty-hour work week for the youth librarian.
I'd just like to note, it says the select board voted to increase the youth librarian's hourly rate, I'd like to add that it's the town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
That voted to approve the increase.
And do you have the original on that, Ed? Assuming what I have is a copy, so I won't sign it. Okay, so, can we have a motion then, for this PCF?
I moved to approve Joanna Douglas's PCF.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ed will find me the original at some point.
I just had it, and I don't know where it went.
Elusive, all right, the next thing we have are licenses and permits, and we have, oh, here we go, we have a one-day wine and malt permit request for Conant Park from Erica Flood and Craig Bowdre for August seventh, from ten AM to seven PM as a family party, and Ed, it looks like everything is here, the paperwork, I believe, is...
Yes, it is, everything's in order.
All here, the one-day list, the quest, the hold harmless agreement, et cetera, and the permit from the park commission, signed by Paulo Mac, so everything is in place. Thank you. I want to sign this one.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
So, Ed, does the park commission collect the fees, or do you? For, like, this is, for example, this is an out-of-town person, so you collect the one-seventy-five in this case?
No, no, they collect the pavilion rental fee.
They do, okay.
We collect in our office the...
The forty-five dollars?
Yes, the licensing fee.
Okay. And have these fees been consistent for a long time? Do you know?
Since I've been here.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
Yeah, I think...
I would like to make some changes to the one-day application, however...
In this pa, in this particular case, or in general? In this particular case or in general?
In general.
You want to just have us vote on this first, though?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second, I think, right? Yeah.
Yes, I think we have a motion and a second. Shall we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So your recommended.
There's a couple of things with the current package. One, you can get an all-alcohol license, but you have to be a 501(c)(3) to do that. So I'd like to put that little asterisk on there, just clarifying it for the people that send it in. We get a $60 check. We have to send it back to them. The other thing is, in the actual application form, it actually requests that they get it back to us two to four weeks ahead of time. I've had people mail it like that, two weeks ahead of time, and it got delayed in the mail, and it doesn't make a meeting. So I'd like to put in, suggest it at least a month ahead of time. And those are basically two changes.
But the fees are still the $150 for town residents plus a $50 deposit? And $175?
I have nothing to do with that. That's the park commission for the pavilion. Which, I mean, if they, with municipal revenues, you're only supposed to, you're not supposed to make a profit. You're only supposed to charge to cover your actual costs. However, I firmly believe that we do get an awful lot of out-of-town business because the rates are both for residents and outside residents are so inexpensive as compared to some of the alternatives.
How long it's been at this particular rate? And the transfer station employees go down and pick up all the trash after these events, right? Is there a certain amount of town work that's involved when this is rented?
Yes, there is. Yes, and I'll have to.
Have they tossed it out anytime recently?
Probably not recently. We should take another look at that. I mean, it did come up during COVID when our town departments started to want to use Conant Park for meetings. And by CDC rules and regulations, like the bathrooms were supposed to be cleaned in between every use and whatever. So the park commission was saying yes, but it's like, we don't have the time or the manpower to.
To do that.
Yeah. And may I please have permission to go back to my Greenway update?
Sure.
There was one piece I forgot to bring up, and Aaron Toshler's been keeps getting on me about this particular piece. And I keep forgetting because actually I don't think I have the authority to make this decision. But the overall group of the towns have formed an alliance that from Northampton down to New Haven, if this rail trail were all connected. And they, all the other towns have signed on. They would like to, not for our particular portion, but they would like the approval to have the overall name of the entire rail trail, the New Haven and Northampton Canal Greenway. And like I say, I keep forgetting. So would the select board be all right with that overall name?
And I think the reason for that is so that this alliance is helping to promote promote the entire rail trail up and down the East Coast.
Exactly.
Even though we don't have our portion done yet, we will still be, as far as I know, the Southampton Greenway.
Right.
Whereas you've got the Manhand Trail, Rail Trail, you've got the Columbia Greenway in Westfield, whatever. We'll still be the Southampton Greenway. But this is trying to name the entire band.
Right.
All the way down to Connecticut and.
From New Haven to Northampton.
Right. And it's going to be more for promotional and whatever. It's an alliance, just trying to get the word out about the trail and raise money and do whatever they're going to do, I guess, with this alliance. That's what I had read about as well.
Did the Greenway committee vote to endorse that and bring it to us?
The Greenway committee's all right with it. And like I say, Aaron just asked me if they had that right. And I said, I'm not sure. And I said, I don't really want to take that on. And I said, let me take it back to the select board.
Right. Okay, so then the motion would be to approve this?
Yeah, exactly. Approve the name for the 81 miles of the overall rail trail from New Haven to Northampton as the New Haven and Northampton Canal Greenway.
Okay. All right, I'll take that as a motion, yes, okay. And a second?
Seconds.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for that, Ed. All right, moving on to warrants. This looks like a very long list, which, as I looked at it, I thought, you know, no wonder I've been spending all my time at town hall. But one thing, I will say, the first three, Ed, we had actually done before because I went back and looked at my list. So we had already approved, or not approved, we'd already announced, 2052A, 52LS, and 52. So those were done at the end of June meeting. So I will start with PD 2152A, which is a payroll deduction warrant with retirement. And that's in the amount of $180,006, sorry, $180,639.16. There's a payroll warrant, P 2154, in the amount of $100,159.03. Vendor payable warrant, W 2155, in the amount of $117,448.79. Another vendor payable warrant, someone came in late on their warrant, W 2155A, for the amount of $1,478.50. And then, starting now with fiscal 22, we have payroll warrant two for the amount of $206,69.34. Vendor payable warrant, W 223, for $297,081, sorry, $297,081.20. Payroll warrant, P 224, And lastly, a payroll warrant, PD 224, in the amount of $41,738.29.
And that one's actually a payroll deduction.
Payroll deduction.
That's my fault.
Yep, payroll deduction warrant. So with that, I relinquish the warrant responsibilities to Francine. All right, good. No other documents, I think, requiring our signatures that I'm aware of? Do we have any offhand?
Oh, we do have these minutes from, do you want me to wait until we discuss them?
All you need to do is sign those.
You're the signer of the minutes.
They, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Those are the amended minutes from the last meeting.
From the last time.
Okay, sorry. I missed.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yep, no, no other documents that I know of. So we do have some minutes to approve. We actually have an oldie but goodie here from March of, March 17, 2020. I was reading that, and I was like, oh, my goodness.
No. Yeah, that was like, that was the pandemic. That was a big, that was the worst week of my life.
Oh, my God, yeah. So.
St. Patrick's Day.
No, it's usually the best week of my life. That was the worst week of my life.
Let's just take a minute, let's just take them one by one. There's three warrants here. I think there was just a couple of things I think I saw on this one that I'm trying to figure out where I put it. Did anybody else notice anything on the March?
I did not notice anything.
Page three, page three. Under reports, at the very end of the first bullet, Open Space Review Committee. Is it Open Space Review Committee? It's not review, is it?
Yeah.
Is it review?
Yeah.
Is it called Review Committee? Okay, my bad. Then the last bullet, at the end of the last, the section following that, the Open Space and Recreation Plan had a meeting. I don't think they had a meeting. I think the committee.
Right, the committee.
So.
Well, it's a different committee, though. It's not the Open Space Review Committee. It's the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
Right. Or it was the Plan Update Committee, was it not?
It was the Plan Update Committee.
Right, so the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Committee.
What page?
Second bullet.
Page three.
Last, third line on the bottom.
From March 17?
Yeah.
Kind of right before the word presentations, go up about two sentences.
Third to last line on the second bullet. The Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Committee had a meeting.
Update.
Committee had a meeting, okay. That was the only thing I think I saw then.
Did you get that, Ed?
So it's the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update.
Update Committee, yeah. The plan didn't have a meeting. The update committee had a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. That was the only thing I saw. Did anybody else find anything?
Nope.
All right, let's go through all of them, then we can vote on everything all at once here. The next one is June 15, 2021. Just two things again from me. Bottom of page three, under the Master Plan Implementation Committee Report. End of the first or second sentence, the information has been placed in two books. I think I would just change that into two documents there.
Oh, no, I've seen them. Books is very pertinent.
They're only like 25 pages, come on. And then on the, on the page two, sorry, under the reports.
Same minutes?
First bullet, yeah, the same minutes, June 15, page two. Just Senator Velis, spelled wrong, his name. But the middle of the page, under the first bullet, Select Board, toward the end of that first bullet, Senator Velis and Representative Sabados were present. Velis is V-E-L-I-S.
Oh, right.
Yes. Just type those.
Where is it?
Middle of page two, thereabouts, at the end of the first bullet, toward the end of the first bullet. So you've got the Select Board bullet.
The sentence starts on Monday. Yeah, go up to four.
Okay, I got it.
Yep, okay, that's it. I think that's all I saw. Okay, anybody else, anything?
Nope.
No.
All right. And the last one is minutes for June 29. Anybody see anything? I think it's just a question. Is the new business in town, is it Dreamer or Dreamers?
It's Dreamer.
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 Dreamer, so we've got an S on that. So those would be just, take off the S, that's all.
Where's that?
Under the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oddly enough.
Dreamer.
The third line now.
Dreamers Store, yeah, third line, the very top of the page, under the Pledge of Allegiance bullet. Just take off the S there, and I think.
Well, it's either that or I put an apostrophe between the R and the S.
Oh, that too.
I'll get rid of the S.
And then on page two, down the back page, just the last line, under reports, congratulated Vulcan LLC DBA Dreamers.
Yeah.
It's not spelled right. It's misspelled. Isn't it V-O-L-L?
And Vulcan's spelled wrong.
Yes.
I'll fix that, too.
V-O-L-L, okay. And this is why you're getting all these grants, because you're, this old press review and Diane and everybody's writing ability.
We're just going blind, is what we're doing. Okay, so with that in mind, with those, a few corrections, could I have a motion to approve these three sets of minutes? I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move it. All right. Just lost my focus. Okay, any updates on pending items, Ed? On the Green Community Grant, Charter Building, or the Clearwater Woodland Boundary?
No.
No updates, okay. We do want to still keep especially the Green Community Grant on our headline. And you know what? As I look back, actually, I think it was in that March meeting, we started talking about the Charter Building, so a year ago. So I think we ought to figure out, do we need to have them come in and talk to us? Or what do we need to do with that?
No, I'll reach out to them again.
Okay.
Like I said, the disconnect seemed to occur once we said we'd keep the building. So it might be easier just to say, knock it down.
We're planning on knocking it down, if you want it.
Yeah, you can have it.
Yeah.
Come get it. All right, good, okay. All right, and then for the calendar and announcements, our next select board meetings are already scheduled for August, for August 10 and 24. And we probably should try to schedule September while we're here. Labor Day is, let's see, let's go again.
The 6th.
Labor Day is the 6th, so our normal meeting time could be the 7th if we're two weeks out from the 24th.
Well, now Lucy did bring up the fact that.
Point.
The select board meeting used to be on the Tuesday night when.
They were open?
Our two offices are.
Open and.
Are open.
Until 6 o'clock, right?
Until 6 o'clock.
And are those specific nights of the month? Is that?
Actually, believe it or not, yeah, it falls on the Payroll Tuesday. So in this particular case, if we wanted to get back on track.
Okay.
We'd either have to move the Select Board meeting to the.
14th.
14th, or it would go back to August, whatever that is. Yeah, exactly. So those are the two options.
Those are the choices, huh?
The, I have never seen a great deal of traffic in here for, you know, for the draw of the Select Board meeting that pays their bills or goes to the town clerk's office. But I could be wrong about that. The one advantage I do see, and of course, it also means they need to be or should be upfront on the Select Board agendas on those evenings, are at the times, if we're like tonight, on a tight schedule to get somebody sworn in to serve on a committee so they have a quorum or whatever.
Right.
At the times that we may issue bonds or state notes and need.
Need general signature.
Need signatures for those type of things. Or there are some state grant forms and.
Sure.
Whatever that would be advantageous if they were approved, signed here, the town clerk was here and could put the town seal on them. So that's, that's the biggest advantage I see to being on that same schedule.
Okay, so those are.
The only thing with going on that schedule means that we're meeting Thanksgiving week and Christmas week if you roll forward.
Meeting Thanksgiving week, I.
I'm just saying, I mean, if we follow the payroll cycle. So we'd have to be adjusting that. And just a side note on the scheduling, you know, I would ask that you consider moving public comment to the beginning. Now that we're back in person, asking somebody to wait until 10 o'clock, when if they have something that's on the agenda that they want to speak about, I'd rather hear from them in the beginning before we've already dealt with the issue. Just a thought.
And oftentimes, though, open time is not necessarily, for things that are on the agenda, though, right? I mean, for the most part, it's other stuff. I mean, if it's on the agenda, they would sit through the agenda to get there, but, okay, so.
The Select Board, much to my dismay, for the three and a half years I've been here, have been very accommodating to the public and actually does, for the most part, engage them if they have a comment during.
I was sitting here tonight saying, I just, I ruled this completely different at the school committee level. It's like, you can't go to the podium and just tell them.
Yes, well, live and learn. Okay, so I guess then our choices are, so we hear John's comment about going forward for Thanksgiving and, but maybe things will.
Maybe those two months, we change it.
Change it, yeah, right, exactly.
We could change up something perhaps there.
That's the hard part of this, especially with Monday holidays and whatever, is that something will.
Interview.
Bounces off that schedule, and we'll be off. Then you'll try to get back on, you'll have another holiday or something come up, and you're back off. have another holiday or something come up, and you're back off, and trying to get back on it again is.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is we're already set for August 10th and the 24th, and our choice would be to do also a meeting on August 31, just to get us back on schedule.
Right.
And then that would put us on September 14 and September 28.
Right.
Right, or you skip to that 30th and have a three-week lag and go to the.
Yeah, three weeks seems a lot long.
Yeah.
Long time. Are we okay with a meeting on the 24th and the 31st of August?
Well, I kind of like the idea because I say we take the 31st and that is our deadline to do public interviews, assuming that we have good candidates.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Right? Because we'll only be a week out from a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So 31st, 14th, and 28th, is that?
Yes.
What we're talking about? Okay, so let's have a motion then to set the future meetings after August 10th and 24th to August 31, September 14, and September 28. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so be it. Great, and do we have any people from the public? I think our public is.
Oh, no.
Come and gone. Tammy, if you're out there, we can't hear you, but anyway.
They're on vacation this week.